All right. All right, welcome into our May meeting of the Amherst School Board. We're going to get started right away here tonight. We're about 15 minutes earlier than normal because we do have a public hearing to get to. So with three of our five board members here, two more will be late arriving tonight due to prior circumstances and commitments. So I will take a motion from the board members that are here to open up our public hearing tonight to discuss printers and some unassigned funds.
I'll make a motion to talk about printers and unassigned funds.
Jason, Victoria's second.
I'll second.
So I will take a motion. All in favor? All right, we have to roll call vote publicly. Nope. All right, all in favor, three, and none opposed. So with that, I will turn it over to Amy Facy to present what we are going to talk about and have a public hearing on tonight.
Absolutely. Thank you, Tom. So tonight we have two items for this public hearing. The first is unanticipated revenue for FY22 for the return of surplus funds from Health Trust for medical and dental premiums. And the second is unanticipated revenue for FY23 for a buyback of copiers in the Amherst School District. So just a note as best practice going forward, we will be looking to have public hearings to accept all unanticipated revenue that was not budgeted. And this is important because the district is not able to spend more than what was legally appropriated, even if there is offsetting revenue. So to avoid potentially spending over the approved appropriations, grants and other unanticipated revenue should be accepted at a public hearing. So once approved to accept and expend the revenue, the budget may be amended so that the revenue appropriations may be increased. And this public hearing is the first step to move towards that best practice. So the first item was for Health Trust. So on November 23rd, the SAU received a return of FY21 funds from Health Trust for the return of surplus from medical and dental premiums. An Amherst portion of this return is $366,177. So this public hearing is to authorize the Amherst School Board to accept this revenue. For Amherst, in addition to being best practice, accepting these funds will give the board an additional option to offset the likely deficit in the expenditure line of this year's budget, including using the special ed trust fund or applying a portion of these Health Trust funds. So at the June board meeting, we will have a more accurate projection for unassigned fund balance so that you can make that determination. For the copiers, over this past year, it's become evident that many of the copiers in the school districts and at the SAU are at or nearing end of life. So after a review of existing equipment used to copy and print, it was determined the most efficient plan was to drastically reduce the number of printers and replace the outdated copiers that are constantly breaking down and are difficult to service. So after a review of quotes from three vendors, the proposal from Budget Document Technologies was determined to be the most competitive. Budget proposes replacing 20 district copiers with new Konica Minolta leases, and four of the newer copiers that are throughout the district will remain in service. So this proposal also includes something called the Paper Cut solution, which will help us track and manage printing as a way to reduce waste and save money. In addition, Budget will buy back the old copiers for a total of $28,000, of which $14,000 is for the Amherst School District copiers. And this public hearing is to authorize the Amherst School Board to accept this revenue. These funds will be used to reduce costs associated with copier equipment during the FY23 school year. After FY23, while we estimate, the estimated annual cost may increase a small amount, the Paper Cut solution will encourage efficiency, which should realize savings. And perhaps most importantly, we will be finally providing our staff with up-to-date functioning equipment. So that's the end of my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Facy. I will now open it up as part of the public hearing to comments from the public tonight. And just so I'm clear, it's comments regarding, the public comments are regarding this motion. We'll have a regular public comment session after the fact. I don't know. I just wanted to get it out there. Yeah, push me a button.
There you go.
Got me? And you'll have your standard three minutes.
All right, thanks. So I generally approach today to point out that I think some of these unassigned funded balances that come back in, whether it's this fund or other sources, should be accepted with specific spending plans in mind at the time they're accepted instead of just going to the general fund because of the way that the funding works for these schools. So I hope you can explain kind of how this will work. And a question for Amy would be, at some point, could you explain what happens if the money is ever not accepted? Thank you.
Yeah, so the copiers is...
Yeah, she can answer.
Okay, yeah. So, yeah, so the copiers, as I think I said, will be, will go towards any expenditures related to copier equipment. So basically the lease and any other repairs or service. For the Health Trust return, those funds will go to a designated account line, and then the board will, at their June meeting, need to decide how to utilize their unassigned fund ballots. So this year, we are projecting a potential deficit in the expenditure line item. So the board will have a choice to, primarily due to special ed overages. So the board will take a look at their final unassigned fund balance, determine whether to use special ed trust fund funds to fund the deficit, or potentially use the Health Trust funds. Other revenue and expenditures that are left beyond that will be applied to the capital reserve warrant for 650. So that will be, that is legally required to be funded up to that amount. Did I leave anything out?
Yeah.
Adam? Yeah, is that right?
So I guess what I'm asking, the whole idea of where it goes is because like when PTA money comes in, is it the same process where it's accepted and then it has to be assigned, or is that a different process?
Yes, typically when there's funds that come in, the memo will say where those funds are going to.
Okay, thanks, that's all.
So in the future, yes, when we, when we accept grant funds, we'll do the same process.
Okay, thank you.
A little bit of a nuance with the grants is many of the federal grants are now able to be expended over multiple years. So it's important for us going forward to determine what is going to be expended during that year because if we accepted the full grant and then that we didn't actually use all of those funds, we could potentially be shortchanging funds for the following year. So, yeah, hopefully that helps.
And this, Amy, is just, we're just adding this to the unassigned fund balance, and we'll be able to use this on whatever projects we deem necessary, or return it to taxpayers, or some combination thereof.
And we're going to be applying this to a specific account, account line in the budget, so it will be isolated. So you'll be able to see all of these Health Trust funds in one specific line.
Not specific to a use, but specific to its own funds. We see that this is what we have in there, and we can choose whatever we want out of that 366 and change.
And in addition to that, should the board want to use those funds for anything else, it would, it would require a transfer from one function code to the other. So as the SAU, we wouldn't be able to just spend those funds. We would need to bring it to the board to be able to make that approval.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Any other public comment? Okay, so I will close the public comment session of this, and I will take a motion to close the public hearing. We can keep it open if you guys want, but...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion from Jason. I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Victoria's second. All in favor? That's four votes now, as Mr. Conklin has joined us tonight, and none opposed. So with that, the public hearing is closed. I will take a motion now to, make two motions, actually. The first motion, we'll vote on the first one separately, if I can find it again here, excuse me. There we go. A motion to accept and expend $366,177.68 from the return of surplus funds from Health Trust. These funds shall be accepted into the general fund for FY22. I will take a motion to, I will take that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Victoria, second? I got a second from Josh. Any discussion on this? Any questions for Amy on this?
I would just like to thank you for your explanation that you've already given. I think it really created better understanding about where the money is going to go, and how we're isolating, and making sure that the board has approval, and get our trust around, all around.
Exactly.
And I want to make it clear too, as well, because I think I came in this with the two motions together, assuming that the printer, that the Health Trust funds were going to fund the printers. That is not the case. Okay.
Yeah, they're two separate years, actually, so...
And I caught on to that after the fact, and I'm sitting and looking at it now, but I wanted to make sure that I wasn't the only one that messed that up.
And I'll add that we did receive confirmation from our accountant that it's acceptable to have the public hearing for the FY23, but it wouldn't be expended until FY23, even though we're having the hearing in FY22.
Okay. So any other discussion on that first motion? Okay, I'll take a vote. All in favor? It's four, four, and none opposed. I will now take a second motion to accept and expend $14,000 from the sale of existing copier equipment. These funds shall be accepted into the general fund for FY23, which will start on July, July 1st of 2022. Do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, I have a motion for Victoria. I'll take a second. Josh will second. Any discussion on this one? Any questions for Amy on this one? Victoria?
Can you explain the Paper Cut solution and how it works, or anything about how it works?
Kind of.
I can.
Who can?
Yeah, I use Paper Cut Solutions.
Okay, what do you think?
So what happens if any staff member or faculty member that are on the network, they cannot print without signing into Paper Cut, and they have to sign into Paper Cut through their SAU account. And then what happens is all that information goes to, gets all calculated and calculated, so you can see who's printing how much and all that stuff. You can keep track of how many pages get printed across the district and everybody who's using Paper Cut Solutions. So that's basically how it works. It allows you to track, and you could, if you really want to get nitpicky, you could actually see who's printing how many pages.
Yeah.
That's what...
The idea is, as was explained to me by our Director of Technology, is it's a way to encourage less waste, trying to be more efficient, and hopefully eventually save us some money. We're spending a lot of money on printers right now, so this plan will allow us to get rid of a lot of printers and, and realize some savings. But also, I know I hear from the office managers all the time about the breaking down copiers, so I know our staff is actually really excited about getting new copiers. So...
So in terms of overall budget line items from one year to the next, are we, this was some $50,000 a year, are we saving money on that now?
It's a little bit more than, than what we're paying now. However, with the Paper Cut solution, we're hoping to realize some savings. And also, you know, our machines are outdated. They're not going to get any better. It's sometimes been impossible to find toner, to find parts, to get service. So I would expect in the long run, it probably will save us money.
And is it financially sound? Is it the smart way to do this, to have all, all the leases up at the same time every five years, or is it better to do some rotation where you have, if you have 100 leases, you do 20 or up this year, and then, you know, you're constantly revolving? Does that increase costs over the short term as opposed to the long term? Does it make even, is it a negligible difference, if any?
I wouldn't, I don't know. I don't have as much experience maybe with that, but...
Yeah, I would, my experience, you have better buying power when you buy so many at one time. Plus, the condition of all of our copiers right now, we don't have the time to wait to cycle, phase them in, unfortunately.
So there's four that we're able to hold on to, which is great because they're pretty new. But I, I know that the buildings are pretty excited. So it was, it was, it was a lengthy process to go through with multiple vendors and working with my finance director and Director of Tech, and everyone's done a lot of work. So we're, we're actually all really excited about, about this proposal for, for the staff.
Jason?
All right, good on me. Yeah, so my, my question, first of all, thank you for going through all this. Doing any of this type of work is, at least for me, because I'm not a math mind, is miserable. So thank you for doing all of this and trying to find all the different vendors and stuff. One of my concerns with, because you said Budget Document Technologies, right, was the most...
Yeah, yep.
So one of my concerns, and I don't even know if this is the time we should discuss this, or if it's after, is that the cost that they have given includes 200,000 black and white prints per month. But if I'm reading this correctly, we are currently...
At about 300,000.
Right.
Yeah.
So does that mean that we're gonna, if we go, I understand Paper Cut Solutions is hopefully gonna cut back, but if we move at the same clip, is that gonna then increase, are we gonna pay that per-page price for going over? You know what I'm saying? Because on here it says, oh, where the heck is it I had it? Where it said like, it's some real small decimal that they charge you per page.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, so then if we go 100,000 over, are they gonna charge us that four tenths of a cent per page? And is that gonna be an additional cost on top of the $58,503.86?
I believe this is the estimated cost for everything.
Yeah, I believe if I read through this properly, that they're estimating our current usage continues, and so they built in the cost of if we continue at our same clip.
Yeah.
Got you. So in theory, if we, if the Paper Cuts works and we get down to the 200,000, then that we would save that, that money. That's...
Yeah.
That's the idea.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Any further questions or comments? Victoria?
This is more, more day-to-day, and it's just to mention, I know at our middle school, we didn't have a lot of working copiers this year. I would hope that we actually use the copiers. So while we want to see the count go down... So while we want to see the count go down, I would hope that our, we're aware in the middle school that the count might go up and that's okay. So just, just a thought.
Yeah. But we will be getting rid of a lot of those printers.
Okay. With that, we have to vote on this now. So I will call a vote on this motion that is on the floor right now to accept the $14,000 from the sale of the existing copiers into the general fund for FY '23. All in favor? I have four yeses and I will let Terry get settled. So Terry, would you like to abstain on this one? Not that I'm trying to direct your vote, but you just got here. So with that, our public hearing is officially over. We have voted on those. So we, Amy, you have marching orders now, so to speak. Thank you for all the work in doing that and putting that together. It's always a weird phenomenon when you're excited about things like printers. It makes you wonder what kind of life we all live, so. Exactly. All right, so with that, I will go into the, the regular portion of our meeting. I see that we have our Invention Convention students here along with Ms. Gail Polio. They are finishing getting set up. And so while they do that, Ms. Perrell or Ms. Murphy, would you like to introduce Ms. Polio in her class? Would you like to say any opening statements before we give the floor over to them?
So first, it's always great to see our young, great, creative minds here with us this evening. I had the opportunity for the first time to judge the Invention Convention and it was absolutely unbelievable experience for us. And to see how much your, your brains just think outside the box in order to kind of push us forward in the future. So Gail Polio is here tonight along with Sarah Strauss and some of our amazing students from Clark Wilkins. So I will turn it over to you guys now.
Yes, thank you very much. Hopefully you can hear me and hopefully folks at home can hear us. I'm here to represent our inventors. We're missing Ms. Doyle, Brittany Doyle, who's feeling under the weather, but she would be here otherwise to join our team. We have some wonderful inventors. Down at the end, we have Zoe Blanchett that won the challenge with her sweep feet. Next to her, there's a team with Talia Cant and Avery Low, who has had the child, the, the general with her, their handheld dictionary. Next, we have Violet Jaggar and Andre Loreno with their milk tab. And finally, we have Miles McQuade here with his back hat. So I don't have anything further to say. They're the inventors to show you tonight what they've got. Maybe Zoe, you could give us a start by telling us what you've got to show.
You're gonna stay right there. Those are the people, you just want to tell us what you want to say. What's, what's, what did you decide to do?
My name is Zoe Blanchett. I'm in fourth grade, Mr. Wright's class in Amherst Wilkins Elementary School. I, I joined into the challenge question in Invention Convention. And I saw, I did the problem of sweeping since sweeping is a backbreaking, boring job.
Confirmed.
It takes very long and it's very boring. So I decided to make sweep feet to like solve this problem. Sweep feet solves this problem because it makes it faster, fun, and easier to do it instead of bending over, hurting your back or tripping something.
Thanks, Mom!
It might not work on carpet, I don't know.
No, it won't. Just, just, just hard for. So basically, sweep feet is basically a Chinese sandal with a bunch of bristles at the bottom. So you can basically wear it and sweep along the floor easily, just like skating, basically. With sweep feet, I won first place in the challenge question, fourth grade Invention Convention. Thank you very much for letting me, like, being here, listening to me and participating. Like, just to listen, thank you.
All right, and so now we have Avery and Talia.
Hello, my name is Talia Cant.
And I am Avery Low.
And we're here to tell you about the handheld dictionary.
We're in fourth grade kidders class.
And algebra.
The handheld dictionary is a pencil that you can speak into. Like, if I was writing what we're down by, I didn't know how to spell it, I would speak into it and it would spell out the word.
I have faced with the problem of dyslexia slash dysgraphia. And ever since I found out, I have been trying to find something that can help me make it a little bit easier. And we don't want the kids to rely on this. We always want them to try first. So what we forgot to incorporate here is a back part here, which is going to say, "Try yourself first." And then if you really can't get it, we want you to use the handheld dictionary. We have three buttons, well, two buttons, actually. One is the on off button.
And the other is the translator button.
And the headphone jack, in case you're in a busy place.
The, the on off button turns it on and off and the translator button lets you translate it to different languages. Only a few, not like all languages.
We're trying to work that. Any questions?
Nicely done, nicely done.
Oh, yeah, we have a question.
Terry, is it on a regular pencil or is it a pencil with it already built in?
It's a pencil if, if it already built in.
Okay, so like a mechanical pencil so you can keep adding lead?
Yeah. Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah.
And I, and I like that, that you want to stress that try yourself first. Then if you need it, you need it. I, I like that philosophy. Nicely done.
Nicely done, Lisa. And then, yes, we have Victoria and Andre. I'm gonna get on this side of you guys. Violet, sorry. Violet, sorry. Violet and Andre, here we are. So.
Hi, my name is Violet Jaggar.
And my name is Andre Loreno.
And we invented the milk tab. We go to Clark Wilkins Elementary and we are third graders. And.
Mrs. Gaston's class.
And, yeah. So we noticed a problem at school that people couldn't open their milk cartons. So we decided to make an invention that would change that and make it easier to open. This is our first prototype. It was made out of cardboard and duct tape. But then we realized duct tape's hard to rip off, so we used glue. Oh, I mean, we just used duct tape at first. Then we glued it in with, then we put it on with duct tape. And then we decided we'll do glue instead. And these are the four simple steps to get the milk tab open. Step one, open. Step two, pull. Step three, rip. Step four, drink.
Luckily, they're empty. Anything else?
And so I was really excited to get first place in the general challenge and I'm just happy to be here.
And then finally, we have Miles McQuade. And let me be sure, yes, the back hat. Miles, tell us, tell us what you did here.
At first, I realized that, well, it was really hard to find my hat and gloves at dismissal. So then I realized, wouldn't it be just so handy if your hat and gloves were attached to your backpack? So then I went home and tried to build it. And I did.
Do you want to show it?
It's my invention.
Turn around, yeah, turn, oh, yes. Spin around, spin around just so I can see. Awesome. Will we attach?
And that just shows, showed you the fact that it was detachable.
It's detachable. Detachable. Was there anything else you wanted to tell us about this, Miles? While, while you worked to reattach it with a glove on, mind you? Anything else you wanted to tell us? No, you did a nice job, so thank you. And finally, I want to thank so many of you here who have supported Invention Convention by being judges and all the other support that you've given all of us over this year as we've come back from COVID and done it, even though it was hard to do in person. So thank you very much. Were there any questions that people wanted to pose? Or did they pretty much capture everything?
Did anyone win at the regional?
We had many regional winners, but no overall winner for the grade that would have put them to the nationals. So we had many, like, like we had many winners and challenge in general, they had an overall winner for the grade level and they went forward out of hundreds of the grade level. Yes, they absolutely did. So actually, each one of our inventors here did go to the regionals and did win at regionals. So thank you for making sure our people knew that. They did not stop at Clark Wilkins. They went on, competed and won at regionals and did a wonderful job. Yep.
Terry?
So I just want to tell you guys, for one, it's one of my favorite things I get to do. Second, I was judged for a milk tab and our very first question was where can we get one? Because I was with Ms. Eaton and with Ms. Perrell, we were like, oh my goodness, yes. And I was at the hospital this week and every time they sent up milk with lunch, I was like, dang it, I need a milk tab. So I love that you guys chose things that you knew and that you understood and that your research and you explained it so well. And those of you who worked on teams had such nice teamwork. And I like that you made up a word for yours, you're back boring. I'm going to totally use that word from now on. And so just really well done, all of you. It is, I know that you put a lot of work into this and, and keep, keep doing it, man. It is really a wonderful thing.
We're trying to get Hook to make it awesome.
I'm telling you, I would, I would invest.
Yeah, my mom's trying to put a bat in on me.
Go. Go. That's right.
Make sure she knows it's your money.
Thank you so much. Thank, anything else? Good?
I didn't have a question, but when you put the backpack on with the invention, it reminded me of data from the Goonies. These guys have no idea what that means, but it, everybody else up here probably does. So thank you, guys, that was great. All right, well, will they pack up and they get back to bedtimes and dinner at home? We will open up our first of two public comment sessions tonight. So if you want to come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes. Yeah, and we'll wait for these guys to clear out. So, yeah, y'all have, yeah, you can go ahead, Lisa.
We're ready? Okay, so to the, to the Amherst School Board, I'm here to bring up the issue of student behavior, particularly at AMS, since that is where I spend most of my time. But in also conversations with teachers at Clark Wilkins, they are also noticing more and more significant behavioral problems amongst some of the students. I first met with Dr. Brenisconi and we had a good conversation about problems with communication between administration and the teachers about students who have needed more serious consequences. Can you pause my time? I forgot to introduce myself, Lisa Eastland, Amherst. Okay. Fortunately, AMS admin is beginning biweekly meetings with the teachers to improve upon the communication issue. We also discussed the seeming lack of accountability and what feels like a lack of support when teachers, myself included, send a student to the office repeatedly for being disruptive, disrespectful, and causing general mayhem to have them back in, in the class a short time later. It appears as if the student has faced no real or behavior-changing consequences. Dr. Brenisconi stated in some cases, there is only so much they can do as the law requires us to provide each student with an adequate education, which means they need to be in school and in the classroom, following the philosophy that having students in the active learning environment as much as possible is important, but we have to weigh the detriment to all of the other students and staff. I then met with Mr. Chamberlain. We had a lengthy conversation about these same topics and others that seem to be affecting the district overall. We talked about data collection, specifically collecting data about how many times a student gets sent to the office, for what and by whom. And I didn't think about this till later, that included in the data should be categories such as were parents notified? What was the parental response about the situation? I talked with Steve about a need I see for more student access to mental health care. But Friday before break, he relayed to me, he considers Amherst fortunate and we are to have as many resources as we have and that we have more than many districts in our state. But after living, discussing, and thinking about this at length, I am left with more questions than answers or solutions. I also have seen on a couple of different social media platforms I use and in communications with teacher friends all over the US, we are not alone in this problem of negative student behavior. It is appearing all over the state and our nation. My experience tells me this downward slide began before the pandemic, but the ripple effects from COVID have blown it out of greater proportion. I am thinking of the parable where blindfolded people are all feeling an elephant and each one thinks it is something else based on what they're touching. In our case, the teachers and paras are thinking is one thing, administration is thinking another, and superintendent is thinking it is something else entirely. And my take is, they may all be correct. The other stakeholder I haven't spoken with as much is the parent community. I know there are some who are very frustrated and worried about what their students are reporting as happening at school, in the classrooms, and on the bus.
You have 10 seconds left. Would you like to pause and come back after?
Absolutely, thank you, that's a perfect spot.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up. Anybody else? Lisa, would you like to continue?
Right, Lisa Eastland, Amherst, I feel like I'm on TikTok, part two. Okay, the many questions I have fit under two subheadings, but I'm sure there are more. First is communication. Is this basically a communication issue? Do teachers feel like they are getting enough information to know they're supported in the classroom? What is the parent's gauge on classroom behavior? Are report cards giving them the information they can assimilate best? Are the best mechanisms in place for teachers to nurture existing school-to-home communication bridges? Are they being given enough time to do this? What communication link is missing between students and staff? Do students feel like they have the means and the relationship to ask the teacher to tweak lesson plans or provide extra different help? Second is trust. Is this essentially a trust issue? Do students trust that teachers are really trying to help them? Do teachers trust that admin has their backs? Do paras trust that SAU is supporting them and that they're building admin or looking out for them? Are the 90% of the students who are working and participating appropriately within the school community trustful that they're being seen, heard, and able to get their needs met? I am bringing this to you to give you food for thought when looking at policies and budget spending. I know Mr. Chamberlain is presenting all the data tonight and I hope it will shed some light on the day-to-day environment in our schools. One area I hope you will consider is bringing back classroom slash team-level paras as they are a vital link to aiding all the students in the classroom, not just those with IETs and 504s. When a student is frustrated or lost, having a parent, a person they have immediate access to and a relationship with, without having to ask the teacher a question in front of all of their peers is invaluable to the middle schooler. An available para helps keep them on track, engaged with their learning, and not going off high and to the right, behaviorally speaking. I also think you should do some data mining so you can assess whether the number of mental health professionals in our schools are enough for the issues we're seeing. I learned last night, this is being addressed at AMS and I couldn't be happier because at AMS, Kim Lyerney and Deb Dion are absolutely fantastic. They are only two people and it appears the need is greater than we have people to help. A US Surgeon General's report states 20% of our middle school and high school students, quote, "will face a significant mental health condition during their school years," end quote. And I have a link provided. I am aware it is not the SAU sole responsibility to provide care for all of our students. Parents must bear a significant.
Parents must bear a significant portion of this burden, however, schools have become the front lines of this issue. And as I've said, I'm glad AMS is hiring another social worker, but continuing to monitor the need at AMS and Clark Wilkins is important. In summary, some students of our district are struggling and about 10% of those seem to be struggling significantly enough to cause disruption to the educational process for all involved in the classroom community. This is a serious issue that needs to be brought into the open and discussed on many levels about how we can best support all members of SAU.
Thank you, Lisa, and as you mentioned, this will be discussed tonight with Mr. Chamberlain, he's going to be presenting on it tonight. So, it's a first step for us as a board to hear about a plan and to go forward and to work on this issue. So, thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. Also, for other board members, I sent this letter on to Tom and Victoria, I don't know if you forwarded it and Danae has it for the public record.
I want to make sure Danae had it, so, thank you. Any other public comments tonight, for now?
Hey, guys. I'm here today to talk about the reopening plan and, you know, obviously, laws change since we had that vote earlier in the year. It's May, a lot of parents getting ready for the next school year. Like to know what you're leaning on, any kind of odd restrictions other than just open schools, no testing, no masking, no social distancing problems or whatever. We'd like to know ahead of time so parents can make the right choices. I think, I want to mention again that one of the real advantages of public schools, overseas homeschooling, is the social interactions that kids can get, or students or other adults. It's part of the healthy process, helps avoid some of the mental problems that we've seen caused by the reopening plan policies. And I'd like to, you know, hear kind of where you're leaning on that, if not, you know, get the whole reopening plan voided here and get ready for a healthy, happy school year next year. All right, thanks so much. Oh, one more thing, well, your reopening plan has specific things in it that need to be corrected, like masking, for example. But there are other sort of inferred derivative requirements that came out of that and I'd like that to be addressed specifically to prohibit that same mistake happening again. Like, one of them was, there was an idea of requiring TV viewing during lunchtime with the stated goal of reducing social interaction with students. Obviously, I said, that's an important part of public schooling, I'd like to make sure that any kind of efforts to social distance students in a healthy, open lunchtime environment would be rescinded and we could have, again, a friendly school year next year. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, with that, we will move on to our next agenda item tonight. It is our consent agenda, so I will take a motion to accept the consent agenda tonight.
I'll make.
I got a motion from Josh. Victoria, would you like to second?
Sure.
Okay, I have a second from Victoria. In light of our packed agenda tonight, I won't go through item by item, but are there any items or any topics of discussion that board members have with the consent agenda? Any questions that you want to bring up to either administration or building leaders that are here tonight? Victoria?
Yep. I'm going to start with Clark Wilkins, you guys were first on the list there. MTSS is mentioned often. When would it be appropriate for the board to hear some progress? Or what? I don't know, it sounds like you're doing a lot of things with it. Okay.
We are doing a lot of things. So, and we also, as a, please?
Future principal's report.
Yes, yeah, sure. Future principal's report, we will talk about it.
Okay.
Is it okay just prior to answering any more questions? So, it just seems appropriate too, we have many people, teachers in the audience. So, just saying publicly, it is Teacher Appreciation Week and just how thankful we are for the quality of teachers that we have and for your support of that. And just knowing coming off of two years of, two years of a pandemic and just the level of professionalism and hard work and the amount of very bright individuals that we have. So, just publicly, we just all wanted to say thank you.
And I would second that, it's not unofficial motion, but I would second that, I think the board would probably agree with that as well. Josh?
Yeah, something specific along those lines is, we mentioned the music show performances in here and I did get to go to the fourth grade music show, which was amazing. The whole, I want to thank the whole support staff or the special staff because I know they were all involved, including Mr. Holt, videoing the whole thing. So, the set, everything was amazing, so just thank you to that whole staff because they did a great job.
Any further questions for Clark Wilkins? Go ahead, Jason.
Sure, I actually have, I have two, if that's all right? Okay, good. First of all, I always love these reports, I love reading all the good things that are going on in the school, like the golden spatula and the music shows. And we appreciate all the hard work that everyone's doing, for sure. And so, sometimes I feel like the questions don't necessarily reflect that, but we do. So, my first question is about the after-school enrichment activities, which I think is exceptionally crucial. And this might even, this might be an unfair question to you, it might be a question that we as a board actually have to tackle because you have bolded and underlined no cost. And I'm wondering, is that something that we think we're still going to be able to sustain at no cost? And is that something that we actually have to discuss? Because obviously, the more things we can provide at no cost, it's great.
I would love to answer. So, I think we're just really proud to be able to offer these at no cost for families. And I think it's helping our students have opportunities for different types of activities, the enrollment and interest in the program, that it's been tremendous. And our teachers are getting opportunities to work with other teachers in the building and really bring a different skill set. So, we're really proud of that and I think our families are also really excited when they hear that these opportunities are offered at no cost. So, when you look at our co-curricular line for Clark Wilkins, we have about, I think it's like $38,000 total for that. We've fully expended it this year in all of the extracurricular offerings. And we even had 10 additional offerings that we had to say no to teachers this year because we weren't able to provide more stipends. So, I would say our goal would be next year for us to fully expand that line again, to be able to offer these opportunities. And during budget season, have a conversation with the board to see if there's potential for, you know, additional support at that level.
We also are debriefing with all the staff members that did clubs, just for our efficiencies and some of the things that we learned and actually doing more cycles that parents and everybody else can depend on. So, and again, we have a few staff members in the audience this evening that are running after-school programs.
That leads me actually to a follow-up question, so I lied, I thought I had two questions, but now I have three.
Math, we've been doing math all year, so.
One of my questions, we'll get to math. So, it sounds amazing, and this might not be a question that you can answer, this might be a question the staff, you know, could answer, maybe a public comment too, maybe. Are there any opportunities, are we finding things that are working really well, that are increasing joy for students that we could then embed in the regular school hour day? Right, so are there like some of these more hands-on activities that we're finding, like, hey, kids are finding a lot of joy in this and there's real educational value and we can embed it in our curriculum? Are we finding any of those chances?
Yeah, I would say we are.
We have joy all the time.
You know, in some of our clubs, like we did a picture and writing club, which, you know, was a professional development opportunity that a couple of our third grade teachers took on their own. And then they were able to really bring narrative writing in with painting and connect, you know, that kind of joy and experience for students after school. And they're planning on doing some of that with their students, too. You know, I think giving everyone a chance to try something that they're passionate about has been awesome. And building connections across the building to find others that have like-minded interests is definitely going to help support that growth going forward.
And para educators are also running programs and going between Clark and Wilkins. There's a mentoring program where the third graders walk over to Clark and actually engage with the kindergartners, too. So, you have that piece of, you know, when the kindergartners will come to first grade, they actually know some other students in the building, so, building that bridge.
That all sounds, I love all of that. Thank you for that answer. So, I know the math pilot is mentioned in here and it looks like there's going to be a lot of feedback coming in in the near future. And I guess I'm just, I'm hoping that maybe, you know, I don't know, whenever all that feedback is compiled, could we get, you know, here at the board, like some feedback on how?
Christine's ready to.
I'm going to let Christine answer that question because it involves, of course, our teachers, even this afternoon participated in a focus group that Christine helps her run, but she's leading the work across the district to be able to.
I'm sorry for asking you that question.
Oh, it's fine, I just know she's excited to answer it.
I'm glad it creates some excitement.
So, we are really busy this week and next gathering all of our feedback and information. We'll be finalizing our teacher surveys, they'll be coming to us by Tuesday. Student surveys, I'm actually sending out tonight and office staff is in the middle of photocopying and sharing that with teachers. So, we're really in the process of getting all the information out to teachers to get that data back. We already collected everything for bridges. Math, this is for the current program we're piloting right now. So, we have a meeting next Tuesday, you know, mid-morning, since it's the late start day, we're meeting after the late start, mid-morning through the afternoon. And we have a math committee that's going to be digging through all of that information, synthesizing it down and then hopefully coming to consensus and making a recommendation on what program they are recommending to the superintendent to use for next year. So, I have an agenda item on the June meeting for us to provide an update to you on that.
Anything else before we go to AMS? Terry?
All right, there we go. So, I see a picture of gardening, yay, or do we have gardens back? And I, thank you, ladies. I see Earth Day gardening, which is good, but are we actually expanding those gardens and keeping any up this year? I know that it's kind of been an on-again, off-again thing.
So, the, again, teachers that are in the audience today kind of, for Earth Day, kind of took over some of the area outside of the classrooms. I think that environmental club or gardening club would be something in the future that we would be looking to do. But to, as we stand right now, it is more of the special interest groups that are doing the gardens.
Thank you, ladies. At my house, anything that God waters grows, so I totally understand.
AMS. Victoria, I know you said you had something.
I do. Ecology school, in the report, you stressed that it is usually held at the beginning of the year and that's a positive. Is that something that we're looking to do again next year?
Yeah, so, a few years ago, pre-pandemic, we made a shift for our sixth grade. So, eighth grade, we're going to continue to do in the beginning of the year. As you know, we started, we got everyone on the bus and then had to turn around some very disappointed students and teachers because they had COVID cases and had to shut down ecology school this past fall. It was really important for us to get our eighth graders up there because they missed out in their sixth grade year. So, they went this spring, had a tremendous time, lots of excitement, lots of hands-on learning. The new facilities is really set up very well. I'd say it even allows the extensions with curriculum to be even deeper, which is really exciting. Our sixth grade, a few years ago, we had, right when the pandemic hit, we decided to maybe transfer that to a spring field trip. Sixth grade students are still coming in pretty young. We had a lot of homesickness, it's really the first time for a lot of kids that they get a chance to be away from families and go for an experience like this. Doing that this spring, so far, we've had nearly every student, only a handful of students decide not to participate for a variety of reasons. But really had tremendous turnout with the program. So, our plan is to continue to do it in the spring for sixth grade, in the fall for eighth grade. Eighth grade offers a great kind of team building, setting that up for the year, especially as our eighth graders are starting to get itchy to stretch their wings, have more responsibility. It's really a great kind of founding experience. And for our sixth graders, it fits really well in the spring with the curriculum. Ecology school has worked really closely with us to modify curriculum so that it's not a repeat when they go in sixth grade and then when they go back in eighth grade. So, it's really tailored to that spring curriculum and works out well there. And we're sending our next group of students is going next week and along with our Mont Vernon friends. So, it's a great opportunity for integration and for those students to get to know one another before they transition to middle school next year.
Josh?
Yep. Speaking of transitions, you got a busy week of transitions at the school this week. So, do you want to highlight any of those that are coming up? I know fourth grade's tomorrow.
Sure, you know, the middle schools in a bit of a unique position because we're the one school that touches every other school across the SAU. So, the spring is a really busy time of year as we're preparing to send our eighth graders off to South Heagan. And I've been working with counseling and various pieces to get them all squared away for their freshman year and then have some more step-up activities planned for the very end of the school year for them. Fourth grade is, we're having our parent night tomorrow night. These parent-student nights are my favorite part of transition because they're really run by our students. So, both the Clark Wilkins night and the Mont Vernon night have student panels where kids get to ask questions of kiddos just a few years older than them who've gone through this. The questions the students come up with are always, are always the best. And it also gives parents a chance to hear from other students and parents have a chance to ask them those questions as well. So, our Mont Vernon night is on Wednesday. Both nights start with tours of the school hosted again by students. So, again, it's a great opportunity for community building, for that chance for, to demystify a little bit of the middle school. It's always a funny age, right? And it's a chance for students to see their peers and see that success and start to feel comfortable. So, it's, tomorrow really kicks off the first of a whole bunch of opportunities to then even tailor even closer for students who might want to come in for a personalized tour or meet some of the teachers on a different level. And it really, really just starts that process for us, so, really excited, a very busy week, but a really good week.
Awesome. I have one other thing, but I don't know if anybody else has. Terry, you want to go ahead?
First try, there you go. So, actually, mine was also around transitions and I know that you always do a beautiful job and it's a huge part of your charter, right? Is to welcome in our younger and to successfully send on our older kids. Have there been any changes this year? Because we know that just mentally and emotionally, they're a little behind the curve of where they normally would have been. Have you adapted what you've done this year to kind of address that?
So, I'd say we haven't made huge changes in our transition activities. What has changed and what really changed this year is really, especially the beginning of the year, recognizing that whole-child approach, recognizing the importance of morning meeting or launch pad, depending on the grade level. Really trying to focus on that development level, welcoming students in. I was really pleased with our kickoff at the beginning of this year that allowed students the chance to really focus before we start diving into all of the learning, before we start diving into classroom expectations and all of those pieces. Let's spend some time really focusing on relationships and getting comfortable in the school again. I think that that was a huge success this past fall and I'm hoping that similar events and similar activities continue forward. Because it's really those more, those smaller, more personalized moments that I think have the greatest impact. I will say that we have had an increased number of families that might have reached out and said, hey, can we come in over the summer or can we do some of those pieces? So, we'll continue to try to offer those opportunities to really meet students where they're at and families where they're at, to help them really set them up for success for the fall.
Nice, thank you.
Yep, so, just a quick, want to highlight that the play is coming up, I believe Friday and Saturday night at 7:30. So, get out and support our middle school actors. And then, I believe this is probably for Christine, New Hampshire SAS testing coming up. I know for at least one year, it was sort of waived in terms of funding, number of participants, but I believe we're back to a place where we have to hit a certain number or we don't get funding, is that correct?
Correct, yes, we need to have 95% of our students participate or certainly the state could be at risk for losing federal funding. But we, as a district, students below the 95% participation rate, so if we only have 92 or 93%, those students actually count as zero scores for us in the scores that are shared with the public. So, it does hurt us. We have already shared out opt-out information to families and we only have a very small handful of families. So, less than that 5%, which is great, that's really right where we would want to be and where we were pre-COVID. So, I'm feeling good, I think the information, hopefully, that we've shared here at board meetings, as well as the information we shared when we offered that opt-out, has helped to educate families to understand the implications for opting out. They're certainly welcome to if they feel strongly about it, but it can have a negative impact if we have a significant number to opt out.
Okay, anything else, Victoria?
So, I was hoping somebody else would bring this up and nobody has. So, in February, we had 278 staff absences and in March and April, we had about 350 in both, in each month. My question is, with us talking about behavior, have we done? My question is with us talking about behavior, have we done a climate and culture study, you know, survey, an anonymous survey at the middle school to understand if any of these absences are related to student behavior?
We haven't done, we haven't done those kinds of surveys.
Okay.
As a follow up to that, Victoria, do we have an idea as to how many of these are teaching in the teaching category compared to janitors, custodian, you know, kitchen personnel, et cetera?
So we haven't broken out those numbers at all. And those numbers also include long-term absences, maternity leaves, medical leaves, all of those pieces as well. So that number there is admin, everything from admin to custodial to paras to teachers to kitchen, the whole, the whole piece of it.
Follow up statement. Looking at our Clark Wilkins numbers and then looking at our AMS numbers, we knew that there was a disproportionate amount. To see it go up, you know, almost 100, 980, whatever it is, is concerning and, and I would hope that we're trying to get to the root of why those people aren't coming in. And if there's anything as a board or as a district that needs to be done to, you know, to make teachers, you know, want to be there, we're there to support it, so.
Any other comments on the consent agenda tonight? Okay, having a motion on the floor to accept, I will call the vote. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, none opposed. So that motion carries. I'm going to take the liberty of adjusting our agenda tonight to bump something up early on because we do have our school nutrition services coordinator, Crystal Gendrow is here tonight. So we have an update on the school nutrition program, which is a moneymaker this year. So this is a very exciting. So before Crystal comes up to the microphone, I will give it to Superintendent Steele to introduce her.
Yeah, I just want to welcome Crystal to our district. She's been with us a few months, but has done an unbelievably good job in those few months. Our program has been greatly improved by her presence so far and Amy and I could not be more thrilled with what her contributions have been thus far. Amy, anything to add before we turn it to Crystal?
No, just briefly, yes, Crystal has had a tremendous impact already in her short time here. I know she's going to give us an update on revenues and expenditures, which we meet weekly and I get detailed reports from her, which has been really helpful in understanding where we are. She's going to give some information on, some good news on where we are with surplus and some plans for, for those funds and also on some update, upcoming communications that she plans on sending out. So, thank you, Crystal.
Hi. So we can dive into the numbers first if you'd like. The reason why we're seeing such a surplus this year is because of our higher reimbursement rate and universal free meals. And it has been a tremendous help financially for the program. I'm hoping that we can use these funds to carry over to next year, a portion of them, just in case any emergency equipment purchases need to happen or it's no surprise that costs are going up substantially across the board for everything. So I want to be prepared for that and really set our kitchens up for success, especially when it, it comes to next year, the uncertainty of universal free meals being canceled. As of right now, the universal free meals is a no-go. There are some bills that are being sort of trying to be moved along. We have one that is going to the Senate level, so that's exciting. I hope that it passes for New Hampshire, but I'm not, I'm hopeful, but very cautious. So I want to make sure that we have these funds for next year because next year might not look like this. Yeah, so if you look at the numbers, I, for this year, I want to carry over about $35,000 for Clark Wilkins and Amherst to help with next year's costs. And then also I have an equipment line. The majority of our equipment in our kitchens are on their last leg. Our kitchen staff is working with equipment that is faulty, that doesn't work and doing a great job at it. So I'm hoping I could use some of the, this revenue to improve their working conditions and get the equipment that we need. And then also the smallwares line is bringing our kitchens up to a higher safety and sanitation code level. Right now, for example, we're using a lot of materials to store food that are safe, but they could be better. So I just want to bring us to the next level with that. Awesome.
Okay. Any questions for Crystal? Jason?
Yeah, this might be again, a math problem on my end. So the total, if I understand this correctly, and there's a good chance I don't, the remaining surplus that you're looking to hold over for emergency is 11,139? Because is that right? Because the other will be used for equipment, right?
So I'm sorry if that was a little confusing.
No, it could be.
No, no, no. So if you look at the first, where the Amherst Middle School allocations, that's one block. And then the Clark Wilkins is another block. So the total surplus is the 163,000. The allocated surplus funds is the Clark Wilkins and the Amherst added together. What's left over is the $11,139.99, which I'm hoping can go back to the, I'm not sure the correct terminology that we had talked about, go back to offsetting some of the expenditures for the kitchen utilities and overhead costs. Right. So going back to the school essentially.
And we can come forward with a more finalized plan once we have firmer numbers later on in the year. So these are all still projections.
Yes.
So my concern with this is in terms of the free meals, because I believe we've had to amp, we've had to supplement our kitchen staff in the last year because of the universal free meals. Have we, have we, we had to, but have we actually been able to do that?
We are down, in the Amherst School District, we're down two cafeteria workers across the board. And with our numbers, participation numbers have more than doubled. So right now, we have, for example, right now in the middle school, we have one, two, three, four, we have four, five cafeteria workers who are feeding upwards of 100 or upwards of 500 meals a day. That's not including the snack cart to do the, all the à la carte sales.
So I guess my, my question is, is if universal free meals goes away, participation is likely going to come down because, and we're going to have to make sure that we communicate that excessively over the summer months because we don't want parents or kids to assume that they're going to be free next year and start, you know, like my kid does, just enters her lunch in every week.
Yes.
So, but my concern was that we're not going to be overstaffed if we keep the main, if we maintain the level of staffing right now. We're not going to be overstaffed.
No, 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 no. And to offset some of that cost, if our numbers go down for the higher labor, if there is, which I don't think there will, they'll be plenty busy, but I have some ideas to incorporate classroom catering, smart snack solutions. So if a child has a birthday, instead of mom or dad going and getting cupcakes from Walmart, they can get cupcakes through us or fruit salad or cookies who, and those are a healthier option. They're more controlled because they're being prepared in the school cafeteria. So you don't need to worry about where it's coming from. You know where it's coming from and that it's safe to, for the kids. And there's no peanuts or tree nuts in our facilities. So, you know, allergen friendly for sure.
Great, thank you.
And I just wanted to add, so yeah, the staff have been working exceptionally hard this year. I will say that Crystal actually dons her chef uniform multiple times a week and visits the schools to pitch in and help when, when they need, when they need that. Did you want to talk a little bit about the communication? Because I know Tom touched on the communication and what is going to be going out to parents later on this year?
So I wanted to wait until after April vacation. So within the next week or so, communication to all Amherst, well, to all of our district parents about how to go about filling out and where to find our free and reduced application, the importance of filling it out because it, it doesn't necessarily, it has a lot to do with the free meals, but then we also get a lot of government funding, like Title One funds go, come all through that. So it's really important, in my opinion especially, regardless of income, just fill it out like you would any other school related piece of paperwork and send it back in. So we get a lot of valuable data from that and it, it helps with all of our funding as well.
And so this communication will also be saying that the waiver is not?
The waiver, yes. So I'm sorry, Amy, the waiver will not be passed. If the waiver, if we're able to submit the waiver and it passes for next year for universal free lunches, I'll definitely be filling all that information out, sending it to DOE to participate because I think it's very important that our children get to have two meals a day and sometimes snack too free to them. So it's, it's very important that they're getting that balanced nutrition.
Victoria?
I'm not sure if it's a question for you or a question for Amy. Can you explain a little bit more about how it doesn't, regardless of financial status, why every family should fill it out? Because I think that's a change in our district.
I, that's more of a personal thing in my opinion, just because I feel like across the board, there's a stigma to filling out a free and reduced application. And especially in a community like ours, we need to help promote and help feed our kids. So any, any incoming application, in my opinion, is a good application.
Are applications reviewed by the state? How are they determined? And I only question this because we do have, you know, there are people in this district that have high incomes and I wouldn't want them to submit and then they're getting free and reduced lunch and not that it's anybody's business, but the stigma looks pretty awful the other way too.
Yeah, so it's, it is income based. And when the application comes in, it comes directly to myself and then I process the application through our POS system called NutriKids. It's linked up directly with the DOE. And then I plug in all the information and then it goes through that process of whether it being a paid lunch, free lunch, or a reduced cost lunch.
Jason?
Yeah, so to talk also about why I think it's important that these forms, forms get filled out and please Superintendent Steele, correct me if I misspeak about this, but my understanding is it's also one of the metrics that's used into whether or not we would ever qualify for Title One funding.
Correct.
So what Title One funding does, so they base it on the number of free and reduced or percentage of free and reduced lunches that you have. And so if we could get Title One money, I don't think we would, but if we could ever get, we do, great.
Just not enough.
Yeah. So the more we can get, the better. So that's why it's helpful if everybody fills it out regardless, because even if one of those high income people do happen to qualify, there might be a stigma associated with it, but it could help us get more money. Title One money is often used for like interventionists and things like that. It doesn't, that we don't have to get from the taxpayer.
And also if we have a certain level of participation with the free and reduce, I believe it's up to 16%, then the students in the classroom are able to participate in a free fruit, healthy fruit and vegetables program. So we'd be able to inform the kids about healthier snack choices and then provide them with a free snack to take home. And if our district goes above 50% with the free and reduce, then we could provide universal free meals for all of our students.
So on the subject of communication, I just wanted to thank you. It's been helpful for a forgetful dad to get a reminder every Sunday to sign in for meals and so my daughter doesn't get disappointed that she misses out on pizza day. So that, the communication that has been coming from your department has been great, I think, overall. And also a thank you, I know a lot of our, the, our kids in our district had a lot of fun at Harry Potter camp last week.
Oh, yeah.
And I know you were involved with that and so thank you so much for that. So just thank you for communication and for being involved.
Yeah, this is wonderful. So far, I love my time here. So thank you for the opportunity.
Terry?
We're on a roll, we're on a roll.
You don't understand, they're just so tricky. I just, I just want to pile on the praise that really it was, it was always a sore spot with parents trying to plan their week, not having the menu on time. And so really the very timely menus and having them be things that the kids actually want to eat is very, you know, I think that you've done a nice job of balancing the, having it be something that parents could feel good about, but that kids will actually eat.
Yeah.
And I know that I got to work with you on something separate and it was such a, such a pleasure. And, and when I ran a tournament here at this building, it just made my life so much easier.
I'm so glad.
So I really am excited to see that you are thinking of expanding some of those opportunities and, and saying, hey, you know, we have the staff, we have the kitchens, we have these things and thank you for getting with Amy and really getting creative because facilities, as you know, is something that is a constant challenge for us and trying to do the best with the money that we have when we have it. And so taking this and reinvesting it and making sure that we're bringing our facilities as best we can with the money we have on hand. Thank you for taking that opportunity. I think it's a really great thing to do with it.
Thank you, thank you. Well, thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you, Crystal. Much appreciated and welcome to the district.
Thank you.
In the interest of time, unless there's an objection from the board, we had on here committee updates. Does anybody have any pressing committee updates that we need to, or subcommittee updates, I should say, that we need to get out there or is this something that we can push off till June and give kind of a April, May recap at that meeting?
I just want to publicly thank the PTA for all they are doing for Teacher Appreciation Week. I know we have breakfast, we've got dessert bar coming, we've got stuff on Tuesday and Thursday this week. So just thank you to the PTA and all the work they're doing and specifically to Katie Fantasia and Christine Grayson for stepping up to be president and vice president again.
And with that, all the room parents as well, the decorated doors for teachers to come back to today. So I hope that those were received and appreciated because I think it's just a small token for the thank you that our district parents and board members can, can really provide for teachers. So we are grateful for that and certainly grateful for your efforts as we've tried to voice tonight and have probably failed to do adequately enough, but we shall venture on. So with that, we'll get into some of the, I want to say, no, Victoria?
Victoria wants to talk again. Just wanted to touch base very quickly. Ways and Means had a recap meeting to review the budget process from the past year. And while I took, I believe, six, six plus pages of notes that were kind of stream of consciousness, I think it's important for the community and Ways and Means to know that those notes have been shared with all board members. I've also told people, if you don't understand my notes, please come back to me and ask, you know, about the questions. One piece, several pieces are important. One piece that I would just like to mention is that the, my attendance at that meeting was meant to open communication. We were trying to open communication between Ways and Means, between business administration, the office, the administrators themselves, the board, to try to facilitate any type of conversation that is out there that wants to be had. Many ideas came from that meeting and they're all in those notes and I'm having, you know, side conversations where it's appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on tonight, we'll get to the first of our much awaited topics, one that we were looking forward to from Mr. Chamberlain. So I will yield the floor, sir, for a state of the state on Amherst Middle School behavior.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit tonight about behavior. This really started with, if you remember, my discussions with all the social workers throughout the district and just a current state of the state back then. And we did, as Lisa talked about, some of these behaviors started before COVID, but COVID was a catalyst to some of this as well. So a little bit, so the plan, talk a little bit about philosophy, a little bit about guiding principles, talk about the documentation, get a chance to read the handbook and some policies, talk a little bit about current data that we're going to look at and then maybe some growth and some future actions. Does that make sense? Is that all right? We'll fire it up. So a little bit about philosophy and this is really, at some point, we really do want the board to weigh in as representative to the community about what the priorities and what the techniques and what the philosophies are. What we're hearing from tonight, you know, Bethany, John and I worked very closely together and have been humbled by their willingness to talk and brainstorm and really problem solve about some of our, just the challenges that we're facing this year. The teachers at AMS have been extraordinarily welcoming to me in their classrooms to have lots of discussions and it really has been a privilege. So years ago, when you walked into a room, years ago, when you walked into a room as a teacher, there was a certain expectation and there was a a default to behavior. Um and that would go up as principal and go up as superintendent. I think Adam and I would both agree. There's never times that we walk into a room and we win the room because we have the title of superintendent. So where we are now is um from the past, a title and position of of authority and influence now to relationships. And um that really is, for me, the center of all this work is for long term, and I think this is everywhere, relationship between board and administration, between administration and teachers, between teachers and students, community members, pairs, the whole, this is all about relationships. The ability for us to make great relationships with kids gives us a greater opportunity to influence their behavior. It is not, no, a teacher doesn't walk in and says, I am teacher, hear me roar, and all of a sudden you are, uh you know, perfectly behaved. Now, there's a couple of philosophical approaches that you'll hear me talk about when we're talking about learning, but also we're talking about behavior. And I think one of the differences now, uh and I embrace this, and I think, because I think one of the things that schools do really well is teach. And so where we are now is that we we are, it is necessary, and I think a good thing, that we are teaching behaviors from the very beginning, whether it's at Clark Wilkins or whether it's AMS all the way through Sahhegan. We are actually deliberately and purposeful teaching behavior. And I hope we do this in a constructivist way, which means we help kids construct their learning and connect to their um their experience and and in their individual journey. The other approach, and there are some people who absolutely believe in this approach of behaviorism. And in in full transparency, um I am not a behaviorist. I don't believe we change behavior through carrot and stick through, and I I had this discussion with a board member once. I said, look, if I pay a kid twenty bucks tomorrow, I got a shot that they'll behave for a day. But a smart kid will say, I want forty bucks the next day. So it's really, but there are times, and we'll we'll get to this, when we have to move to the behavior versus relationships. But everything starts with a meaningful caring relationship between the teacher and the student. To me, that is, you know, just to be transparent, that's who you hired last year. You hired someone who believes one hundred percent in this notion of a caring relationship between teachers and students. And everything we do connects to that relationship. You did not hire a behaviorist. You hired someone who's going to come in here and say, A equals B, and B means we're gonna we're gonna balance him and we're gonna do that. Um now, some communities are leaning to behaviors, and that's good. We just gotta know about that because obviously this won't work very well. But that's okay. And I I think Adam would say, I was pretty honest with that when I, you know, when I when I did this this process. So one of the things, and it's very hard, um we often, and one of the advantages I have is I can just walk into a school, because I was at Sahhegan or I was somewhere else, and there's a maelstrom going on. And we have to remind everybody that this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. I promise you, over time, we will see significant improvement in kids' behavior. Now, that time might not be two weeks, it might not be four weeks, it might be years. But if we do this well, we are graduating kids who have a good sense of their self-student agency and have been cared for, meaningful and in depth by bus drivers and food service and custodians and everybody. Because this works if every single employee has a goal of creating a caring relation, caring relationship for the youngster. And for sometimes in my experience, sometimes the most caring relationship, believe it or not, is Crystal. It is the food service. Because every day they walked in and say, you know, good morning and welcome and how is, and and they connect. Bus drivers, principals, I mean, I've I the I've got a chance to see Bethany work incredibly with some of our most challenged youngsters and and with an unbelievable optimism and relentless hopefulness like I've never seen. And that's what it takes. So please understand that this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. But we also have to understand that AMS, it's a five through eight experience. It has to be developmentally different, fifth graders and eighth graders, they are drastically different. And I'd argue probably one of the biggest changes in development that we have in the district. So it is about relationships. It is about constructing and teaching behavior. It is about making sure we're in this for the long haul, everybody. We are in this for the long haul. We will never, and Bethany, I've said this, we've sat in the room and said to a parent, we will never, ever, 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 ever give up. And because everyone is, everyone is worthy, everyone is worth it. And and there's this notion, we'll talk in a minute about double dose. Some kids need this notion of double dose. So that's what I believe, that's thirty-five years of public ed, that's a that's ten years of a PhD that hasn't finished yet. About this notion about care. So that's that informs all that piece. So let's talk about guiding principles. Every day, and Bethany and I say this almost every day, that we have to create a safe, comfortable, productive environment for everyone in the school, teachers, support staff, and of course, the students. And I had a discussion at Sahhegan today. I'd led with that statement with with a family at Sahhegan today. So that's our obligation. That's our, that's our moral imperative. That's what we do. We have to create. So because of Governor Lynch, SB eighteen, students are required to attend school through eighteen. Because they're required, we have to make it safe. We have no choice. That is, we, that is the expectation. Now, the practices that we talk about, there's this notion of critical for some, good for all. Critical for some, good for all. So and I use this example a lot. And my kids, both of my kids went through um full public school. I would have loved, I would adore, I would have been incredibly appreciative if my kids were viscerally cared for every year of their public school experience. But it was not absolutely necessary for my kids. My kids had extraordinary advantages in the world. But for some kids, the only way it's going to make it, if we, they viscerally, deliberately, purposefully feel cared for every day in that place. It's critical, it's good for, hey, I would have loved it if my kids were cared like that. But for some, it is critical, it's absolutely critical. So how, so what are the, what are the the areas? Yes, and for me, it will be for me. And I and I, you know, this notion about care, how we care about kids, how we double dose care for kids. And there is research about how kids perceive teachers as caring. And that research, I'm actually, because of Adam's graciousness, I've allowed to do some some research in this district to 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 put this thing over the finish line. But it's about getting to know each child. And so we'll talk about next week, I have an opportunity to talk with AMS staff, we're going to talk about this notion of in depth about how we care about kids. It is um how we get to know kids, how we put ourselves, look through the eyes of kids, how we make decisions that are best for kids, how we acknowledge care and how we assume best intentions. Those are all critical components of this notion of care. And there is research, we we know what we can do, we absolutely, there's things that we can do that can support kids believing and feeling they're cared for by staff. That's an adult thing that we can do. And what we're trying to do, and the research shows if kids have a sense of belonging in the school, everything gets better. Right? If they belong in the school, they are connected to hopefully math teachers, hopefully English teachers, or plays, or sports, or whatever, or launchpad, or but we have to create this sense of belonging, that every single kid belongs in that school. But at times, at at times, there are certain things, we have to go to coercive practices. Sometimes we have nothing left. Then we have to suspend, we have to out of school suspend, we have to use this notion. But what you can't do is you can't use coercion all the time. Because it's used, lose, use, loses its impact. It's gonna be very judicious about when you choose to use this coercive behavior. But remember, it's guided by this notion of creating a safe, comfortable, productive environment for all. Now, this this notion of constructivism was a guy named Bogoski. And he's, to me, he's, he's one of the guys. He's just, and and I really changed my thinking. And he developed this notion of zone of proximal development. And I apply ZPD, Zone of Proximal Development, to everything, to reading, to math, and to behavior. And it is this notion about meeting kids where they're at. I had a discussion with with a a group of teachers where one of the teachers said, Steve, we now have to teach kids to be certain parts of their their students. Yes, we do. Because that's where they are. Now, we can fight it, we can resist it, we can say, hey, I'm gonna teach it like twenty years ago, or we can accept the kids where they're at. And if we accept kids where they're at, I think the whole world gets better. And when the kids are the center of our universe, we accept kids whether they're behaviorally, socially, emotional, and academically, the whole world gets better. Because I all of a sudden feel like I'm a successful teacher and the students are successful in learning. And this happens. I've seen it. I've been in classrooms. It really is. So this is happening. Can we have a much more systemic and complete implementation? Yes, we can. So just like, uh let's see what's next on this. So a a quick, one of the, so I've been doing this stuff for a while. This notion about care and how we do it and meeting kids where they're at. And I had a chance, um my my last year, second last year, being a soup and hop. And it just was crystallized for me. So I'm, there's a youngster, a little one, second or third grader, um that was really struggling. I was in the building a couple of times and he was given his pair a run, his case manager a run. And I said, you know, once a week, once a month, as much as I can, I'm gonna come and have lunch with a youngster, play Connect Four, play rock, paper, scissors, do some stuff and give the team just a break once a week if I can once. And uh it was, obviously, it's the best part of my time playing Connect Four with a youngster. It doesn't get better than that as a soup, you can ask Adam. So at one point, I'm walking through and he's 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 can be, all the behaviors that were, that you would imagine are a struggle for this youngster, he exhibited at times. I get a chance to watch a PE class. And there was, they were working on the skill of catching. And there was four different levels of challenge to from where this little one was at was catching a handkerchief. Because if you throw it up right, it falls slowly. And he was successful. All the way up through the most challenge was a little ball bouncing off the wall catching. And I can tell you this, if that teacher had everybody meet that kid at the catching off the wall, it would have been, that youngster would have been unbelievably difficult. But because he was successful at the at the activity that was asked, he was uh joyful. And the teacher saw everybody being successful. And that's really it in a microcosm. If we can have instruction, that instructional level in a behavior and social, emotional, and academics be where everybody can be successful, the whole world gets better. I get better because I'm teaching, wow, the the kids are learning. And I I, you know, I was with a, a teacher invited me into their classroom and and said, Steve, if it's okay, I'm gonna do a reset and work on culture and climate. And it was a wonderful experience. And it was the right decision. And I was in another class with a teacher who, for because of a lot of reasons, had forty-five kids in a class. Every Friday for a month, I was in this class. Forty-five kids on the last block Friday afternoon. I can tell you, it was extraordinarily productive. And it was extraordinarily effective learning environment because she planned for forty-five kids. And that's the key, this notion of meeting the kids where they're at. Now, does it squeeze out all of the behavior? No, there are some kids that come with so much stuff that we can't, but I can tell you it squeezes it out a lot. And what we have to do, what I have to do is give license and permission and support and do anything I can to make sure teachers understand meeting kids where they're at is okay. That does not mean we are not a standards-based district. Christine and I had an extraordinary conversation last week about how you do this. How do you be a standards-based district and meet kids where they're at? And because the standards are incredibly important, because we have high expectations and and of course, these kids, but we have to have a significant pre-assessment by unit. And we gotta fill the holes, right? We know that if kids, we meet them where they're at, the efficiency in learning is so much more. So we have to meet kids where they're at, all over the place. There are a couple of other guiding principles. Yes, we, and 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 we'll talk about this policies in a minute. This is progressive, discipline is progressive. I met with a youngster today at a at a different school, but this was a second offense. It was more days in the first offense. We are, that's where we are. We are still trapped in this notion of progressive. It is in our policies in in SAU thirty-nine. But also, right, it is one of the quivers, one of the areas we have in a quiver. But we also have restorative justice practices about how we can make sure that these moments are not just serving a penalty, but engaging in learning. And that's where we want to be. And John and I have had these conversations about voice and choice and using motivational strategies about kids learning from these experiences. Because we are more than just suspending kids. We have to do what we do best. What do we do best? We teach kids. We do it really well. And if we do this and we have a sort of, we we over time, over time, we will squeeze this out. So those are, create a safe environment for all. It is critical for some, but good for all. We have to have, every student has to feel cared for. And we can talk about that next week. I'll start that conversation. Have to make sure they feel belonging. But yes, the real issue, this is not saying kumbaya. The biggest issue I had in my last life was everybody thought, oh, Steve, this care stuff, you just want to sing kumbaya all day. No. This care stuff is an incredibly high, it's a high bar. It's a challenge to care about every single kid every day. I'm telling you, that's not easy in this business. Let's talk a little bit about documentation. So I read the student handbook. It lists, it it is a high focus on orderly. It has a, it has a list of expectations. It outlines that the teacher is the first line of classroom behaviors is the teachers. And their their consequence pieces are lunch detention, after-school detention. And I always have this, look, do I think a lunch detention or after-school is the secret sauce to creating this unbelievable place? No. But what a lunch detention and an after-school detention does, it gives time for the teacher to create that relationship. So it has to be with the teacher. So let's talk about, let's see, sit knee to knee. So the only reason why I think a lunch detention and teacher detention can work is it's a relationship building activity. It is not, and it cannot be, you sit there for twenty minutes, I'm not going to talk to you. If you're gonna do that, that actually reduces behavior. It's gotta be connection time for teacher with student. And John and Adam and I and Bethany, when we met, we talked about some proactive strategies and working with staff about some of these caring principles and putting them into our everyday. And I think John is incredibly excited to have some global work on this next year. According to the handbook, the admin is addressing the continued misbehavior. So the teacher has the first line. The most important relationship is the relationship between the teacher and student. Uh and 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 we have to do everything we can to foster that time. The a- admin works on continued and there is, and this is where the restorative justice stuff comes in, the corrective action plan for students, which I love. And how we utilize that and how we put restorative just uh restorative actions in place. And there's a significant amount of guidelines on each one. I do think um we have to, and Bethany and I have talked about this, we have to take a look at our handbook and update it based on current practices and current principles, also with our policy JIC Student Conduct. The stuff in here about restorative practices and about relationships and about time, it's in there. The JIC, the JIC is an excellent policy, JICD is an excellent policy. It gives you enough. And also, I probably should have read this before. But one day I was talking with uh Bethany and John, said, you know, for some of this stuff, we could just do a Saturday ed. And we can talk to the board toward in policy. The policy already allows for a Saturday ed. So and I'm not saying, but again, Saturday ed is about, everything is about creating that relationship. The time is not isolation and just, you know, put them there. It's to connect with people. So what's going on? So one of the things that's a great um resource is that we have a data specialist uh that is working and works with Christine closely on taking a look at our data. Some of this is done through the Office of Civil Rights. We have mandatory reporting. So we're taking a look at this and we have some new, a a new tool coming to take a look at, make sure we can look at data very quickly. Like eventually, we want to get to, as Lisa talked about, the who, what, where, why, and sure, parents. So we're gonna talk about engaging parents. Right now, in fifth grade, the number one infraction is push or hit, followed by just disrespectful behavior and cell phone. In sixth grade, it's cell phone, number one, cell phone. Vandalism and disrespectful behavior. In seventh grade, it's cell phone. And then pushing and hitting and disruptive behavior. Eighth grade, guess what? Cell phone, disrespectful behavior and push and hit. Those are the top infractions that are recorded. But we have work to do. And Bethany and I have talked about this, about making sure we have a good system for when the teacher is reporting that it goes in the system, because we've changed it this year. And so we have some work to do going forward. Um one thing I, one thing that I look at and and is, is there uh overrepresentation of kids on five oh fours and IEPs? Um that's one of the things that the OCR looks at. And there is not, which is great. There is not an over, so I, so basically on the data, students who have identified support plans are not having consequences or infractions more than anybody else. It is actually a lower percentage of the population. Cell phone misuse is by far the largest infraction. Warning detention, loss of privilege are the most prevalent, most prevalent consequences. Um this year, there's been twenty-nine days of out of school suspension in eight events. And there's fifty-two days and thirty-four different events of in school. And one of the things that I'm disappointed in myself is that because I I didn't really have the connections, my connection to the community to to build a mentor um group for our supervised out of school, never, I had a couple of people work in and they never went through the background check process. So we'll do some more recruiting next year and we'll more formalize that. But I wish that was more successful. So where we, how do we do this? How do we do this? And I've already addressed some of this stuff. So one of the things I, over the break, I was reading an article about the state of the state of public education and teaching. And the notion that they're talking about is a depleted bucket. And I think the depleted bucket actually is everybody around this table, it's the teachers. It is, and we have to take a hard look at how do we fill the bucket back up? And because, you know, in the old day, one of the, my mentors, when my first year as a assistant principal, I said, if you know, if this was year-round school, I'd probably resign. I was so exhausted, so mentally drained. And the soup said to me, Steve, if you're doing this right, you're tired. If you're not tired, you're doing something wrong. That's not applicable now. This is a whole, the last three years of public ed, what's going on has been brutal. We know we have a depleted bucket. So we have to take a look. So how do we fill this bucket? One of the things that Christine and I have already talked about this is we have to take a very, very hard, purposeful, deliberate look at what we're asking the teachers do for professional development next year. It's really got to be connected to this, that it's got to be connected to student engagement, to research-based practices, to relationship building with kids. So they have an immediate return on this investment that they get back to being fulfilled and being to being fulfilled and being connected and feeling good about their professions. And we have to make sure we have license to do that. So we got to fill the bucket. We also have to make sure our obligation, the board's obligation, my obligation, Adam's obligation, Christine's, and everybody around this table is to make sure that our teachers have the time, tools, and training necessary to meet our expectations and what we're doing with kids. Time, tools, and training. And that's something that Adam and I have talked a lot lately about, and Christine and I as well, about do teachers have enough time to be able to develop the type of lessons, the training to develop the type of lessons, and the tools necessary to develop the type of lessons that we can meet kids where they're at and be successful? Because one of the areas that moved my last position, we spent a two years, in a, a two-year commitment looking at trauma and trauma-informed practices. Because what we have learned, kids who have, suffer from trauma, have a, a different remedy than kids who have ADHD or kids who have learning disabilities. Trauma is a very specific thing. And in my last life, and I don't, this is another thing for the community to figure out. But in my last life, we did an ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences screening in kindergarten. And it took us a while to get the community, you know, Lisa talked about trust. I tell you this, if you ask someone to fill out an ACE, an ACE survey, they got to trust you. Right? And, and that's, that's just absolutely true. So, but that's something that we'll talk about. Time, tools, training, acknowledge the care, you know, assume best intentions. All that goes into filling this bucket. And to make sure that all the professional development, again, is connected to this work. Because this is the most critical part. This is where we are. This is the zone of proximal development we are district-wide, is trying to meet where the kids are. I already talked about this. Yes, we have to teach. Yes, we, we have to meet kids where they are socially. Yes, we have to meet their academically. And we have to do this with standards and research evidence-based practices, but also absolute significant pre-assessment. We have to be able to fill the kids' buckets with the skills that they need so they can be successful in what we're teaching them. And it's, it's one step backwards from five steps forwards. But I'm hundred percent convinced, if we meet kids where they're at with high-leverage strategies, then the whole world gets better and learning becomes much more efficient. It is absolutely much more efficient to teach in the zone of proximal development than way too hard and get desperation, or way too easy in boredom and kids then are misbehaving. Bethany has put in an extraordinary number of system structures and supports, the, the Eagle, Eagle Support Team, the MTS Team. We got to make sure that we support this. And keep, make sure that that is well-publicized and well-articulated. And one thing that Bethany and I have already started, but we have to make sure that every single teacher understands that seeking help to, to work with our most complex students from incredibly qualified people in that building is a badge of honor and courage. It is the most wonderful thing. And that's one of the things that I talked to our social workers about next year, or even starting sooner, having office hours. Where from this day, from, from two-thirty to three, three-thirty to four-thirty, that our staff will be there, just drop in and have a discussion and ask questions. Because I've done it. There, I, there is a number of people that I've reached out to in that building with questions about behavior and plans. And I've always one hundred percent been impressed by their knowledge of students and the knowledge of strategies. And we have to make sure, that's what I want to, we, next year, how are we making progress? We are making progress if we have more teachers reaching out to our social emotional support staff than this year. That's a measure of a healthy school. When, oh, wow, I'm struggling with Chase. That's my son's, I'm struggling with Chase. I go see Kim. Kim, this is what I'm struggling. And part of that is my own experience. My first year teaching, I was absolutely saved by two special education teachers at Hollis Brookland High School who helped me become a much better teacher. And we have to make sure we honor that and support that and give time for that. And as Lisa talked about, we have to connect with families. Families are a partner in this journey. But we also have to connect with them on good days. We cannot be the Grim Reaper. We cannot have our phone, you know, our phone numbers, oh, my gosh, what's happening? We've got to turn the table. And, and, and I've done this already. I've taught, I've, I've already made positive phone calls for some of our struggling students that I've been privileged to work with. And they are absolutely shocked, right? That, oh, wow, you mean, you're not calling because he's, you know, so. We have to turn the tables. We have to make hundreds of phone calls, hundreds of connections. And we will absolutely solicit the community as partners in this, because we need them. And nobody knows their kids more than them. No one has the secret, right? The secret sauce in youngsters, it is the parents. And we have to honor that and validate that. And with Christine's help and Kelly's help and, you know, and we're going to, we're going to keep working on our data collection. The, the end result is every month, John gets a report, who, what, where, why, how. And we use that to diagnose and provide support. We're also trying to work on a, using some of our staff to work with our teachers new to the profession. So we're going to focus next year on a, a teacher academy model, where after school once a month, working with some of our staff, where they come in and we can talk about student management. We can talk about planning. We can talk about getting feedback. We can talk about all this. And, because we do know, some of our teachers, even though they've had great preparation, when they're in here, things change a little bit. So we want meaningful and purposeful professional development for our teachers, years one to three. Anybody, of course, can come. But we're going to focus on some of our newer teachers. I think that's it. I didn't really have a crescendo down. I was kind of off the cliff. I am, and finally, before question, I'm relentlessly hopeful. I have found the staff, you know, I did a couple of quick meetings about throwing some research-based practices. Two days later, I'm walking down the hall, Steve, I tried it and it worked. Or Steve, I, I, it didn't work, but it's okay. They are, I think, a hundred percent, they're innovative, a hundred percent, they want to try, they want to engage in this stuff. And, and I, I am honored and humbled by that, that the focus on improvement, focus on meeting kids where they're at. I think that is the secret sauce. I really do.
Thank you, Steve. I, I think that, you know, this topic has come up. It was brought up by Lisa tonight in public comment. It was brought up by Victoria several times. We've had different board discussions, or, or we've hinted around board discussions on this topic several times over the last few months in particular. So because our agenda is packed tonight, and because this topic is not duly covered by one conversation, I think I'll open it up for maybe about five minutes tonight. And I think we can have some takeaways. And if we want to, everybody do some homework, we can come back and discuss this at a further meeting. Maybe look at that June meeting and see what we can discuss then. But I don't think that this is something that we're going to solve or cure, answer all our questions on this first time. So with that, I will open it up for about five minutes till seven-thirty-five if there are some initial questions. But I think we can take it home and then we can work on this and continue to monitor this over the course of the next few months. So that next year, the stuff that we're doing now and that the administration is doing now has a really good chance to, to get seeded and, and really grow, uh, starting in September or August, whenever the first day is. So with that, I will, Jason, you had your hand up first.
First, thank you for putting the presentation together. I know it's, it's a lot. And I don't want you to have to talk too much. It sounds like your voice might be going.
It's lacrosse season, it's okay.
Yeah. I don't want to strain you too much. I have a couple of questions. Where to begin? And obviously, we'll talk about, this is a huge topic. What steps, so you mentioned like an overarching philosophy, maybe the board needs to be involved with that discussion you mentioned. What's, have we taken any like preliminary steps to getting teachers involved in that conversation and making sure that we have a through line, whether that be K, right, we're responsible for K through A, we can't talk about Zalhegan. But, you know, a through line, because I see in, and if, if I'm misquoting this, please correct me. The Clark Wilkins that this, have some people going to the responsive classroom training, you know, which is SLE, SEL-based, and, and I think probably is in line with a lot of what.
Hundred percent.
You're speaking to. So then are we going to try to, you know, have that, so we're looking on, and then, but I guess, so that's like a lot of questions in one. So I guess the big questions are like, what steps have we taken to get everybody on board? Because we as a board, or you as a super, well, whatever the title is at the moment.
No, no.
We could, we could dictate, but if there's no buy-in from the ground, then we know it's going to die, if that makes any sense.
No, a hundred percent. So Christine and I, I think one of the themes that we've had all year is how do, you know, reunite this place and what are the priorities? And we settled on this, on engagement and instruction. And through evidence and research-based practices, which responsive classroom is. So we're looking at a K-six for responsive classroom, and then maybe an eight, twelve, on a little bit more hatty stuff, a little bit more Zano stuff, a little bit more research and evidence-based. But, so I have had, oh geez, in the last month, twenty different conversations with teachers at AMS. And it's, and this is, but, and, and I preach, Bethany asked that I, you know, have some time next week during the late start to, to really talk about this notion about meeting kids where they're at. And also how this connects to our special education process and some things we're doing there. So it's not like the unveiling, but I don't think anybody's surprised that, you know, if you have a, I mean, it doesn't take too long for, every discussion I have with everybody, it's about putting kids first. It's about doing what's best for kids. It's about putting the kids in the, in our universe. I mean, that's, that's just what we do. I think a little bit is about trying to give teachers license, permission, and, and, and support. And, and a little bit more structure to doing this, so they feel more fulfilled. And so I'm going to be talking with more, I mean, Kathleen and Anna haven't had a time to, to walk the building yet. But I know they, this is on our agenda to talk about this, how, you know, and how do we do the, how does this connect to the littles? And, and Adam, I mean, my, you know, my thirty-five years in public ed at seven through twelve. But when I became a soup, I spent a lot of time in the littles, because I needed to learn that and focus on reading and focus on behavior. And, and I'm seeing what, what my experience about planning and processing, about meeting the kids where they're at in littles, I look forward to talking with, with Anna and Kathleen about this and learning from them. I don't, I don't see resistance. I really don't.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that there is. And then I just have one, one last question I have time, Tom. My nose is wearing out.
No, not at all.
I have peeling skin on my nose and I can see it. It's driving me insane. So I'm trying to get it off if that's what I keep doing that. So bear with me. You know, in education, you know, I'm, I'm an educator. We talk about differentiation and meeting kids where they're at all the time.
Yep.
And in my experience, it's absolutely what teachers want to do. It is a heavy, heavy lift. Like, I think we just, we really need to be mindful that we are supporting that work in, in, this is, might sound strange, but like you continue to say, giving license. We need to make sure that if it's us, the board, and communicating to the community that. Things like, and I, this is, I probably shouldn't say this, it was going to get me in trouble. But things like NIWA and SAS, we need to, to like leave room, like not emphasize that so much. We need to leave room. We've had a pandemic that has affected kids that has increased or exacerbated our situation.
Sure.
And we need to like.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Focus on letting kids be kids and work on where they are developmentally. So we, if that means we as a board need to communicate that better to the community, because I know it's always like, where are we ranked? And it's, those pressures harm, or make it more diff, I shouldn't say harm, make it more difficult for teachers to focus on the things that we're talking about here that we're saying are critical.
Yeah, I can't, you know, when I, when I fool around and I just mess around, I said to Christine, I said, what do you think if all the boards do a moratorium, one year, we're not going to talk about NIWA at the board, just for one year? I can say that because I'm a freaking one-year guy. And, and I won't tell you what Christine's comment was. Steve? No, I'm just kidding. And I don't, and it's, and it can be symbolic. And, and, you know, there is a role. And, but, you know, I, I think the notion of time, tools, and training is not insignificant. I, I felt in my past life, I could not ask teachers to do certain things unless I gave them the time, tools, and training to do it. Otherwise, it's not fair. This notion between support and versus navel and gotcha, right? And accountability. And I'll, I'll be honest, I've had a chance to dig in on certain documents in this world right now because of my little parentheses next year. And this notion of time, and how much time we give teachers to plan, because, you know, there's two, Adam's lack, because I, I talk about two things all the time. I talk about caring about kids and making sure we have magnificent instruction. That's, I'm, I don't have a lot of tricks. I, I'm, that's why, you guys, that's why it's a quick for one year, because you're going to be so tired of me. But we care about kids. And then we have to make sure teachers have the time. Because to meet, to, to value and care about every kid in a twenty-four kid classroom, you have to plan, you have to have a culture planning. I've never seen a teacher meet the needs of all twenty-four kids without extensive planning. Not saying it hasn't happened, I just haven't seen it. And do we give them enough time to plan that kind of engaged lesson where we can meet kids where, I'm not talking about twenty-four plans with twenty-four kids. I'm talking about multiple entry points, about certain, and, and pre-assessment for all kids. And time matters. And, 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 and I, I tell you, there's a difference, you know, when I walk across the parking lot, planning time is a different century when I walk across that, when I walk across that parking lot. And planning, and, and we have to give teachers the time, tools, and training to be able to do what we want them to do. I think that's fair. Right? Isn't it? Am I whack? You can tell me if I'm whack.
Right on, right on the mic.
But, no, I mean, I'm all in on this. I want these youngsters, I want, my dream is to have a teacher leave the day thinking, wow, that was a real, I felt really good about that. That's what I want for teachers. And there was a teacher that I had a little bit of journey with, from an incredible ability to personalize, to an incredibly frustrating in about four months. And I want that teacher to feel, I want teachers to feel good. I really do.
I'll, I'll let us go for another three minutes. Terry, go ahead.
So first off, thank you. And I'm really excited about a lot of this. And I like that you're looking at it as, it's not an overnight solution, right? You, you don't make these, these systemic changes. And I'm very happy to see that you're very relationship-based, because I think all successful, anything, successful teams at work, successful, anything, it starts with relationships. And if you don't start there, then you're going to fail. And so I think that it absolutely is the center of all we do. But I am equally happy to hear you say, we need to support our teachers. Because we can't keep piling on and going, oh, by the way, I want you to do this, and catch up with that, and do that, and do that. And, and everything's a priority. We have to pick priority. And if our priority, and I would say, I'm one of five on this board, but my priority would be, if we get the relationships right, the rest will follow. And if we acknowledge the trauma at this point, it used to be that you could look and you could say, okay, maybe five, ten percent of your class is going to have gone through some, they're going to have a high ACE score for whatever. Now, you're going to look and you're going to say, a majority of that class from the past three years has got some level of trauma. And if you, if you don't do trauma-informed, and you can't do trauma-informed if you don't inform your teachers on how to deal with trauma-informed, and it can't just be your two social workers and your psychology, it can't just be that handful of people that are fantastic, but they can't do everything. So anything that we can do to support and make that happen and be a priority for that, I think that it's only going to lead us to success and to less frustration. And, and I understand it's hard. I guess my only thing that I think that is one of the things that Lisa was really coming at the core of was, and that I know has been a frustration for a lot of families, is when you have the, the one or two kids that take the majority of that teacher's time, because they're just so high needs, they're so high needs. And it steals the attention and the time from the other ninety percent, right? I don't know that we have found the right balance to deal with that. And that I know is going to be a continuing challenge. So I am all in on all the rest of it. I am a TBRI believer. And I keep, I keep, I'm trying to get the foot in the door for that. There are a lot of good things. But I think that at the same time, we need to find a way that we're supporting those kids that are kind of showing up ready to learn. And they're in a good place. And right now, they're sometimes getting a little bit, not neglected, but it's hard. Because, because the attention's getting drawn by those who are the higher needs. And I don't know that we have a rock-solid plan for that yet.
No, absolutely fair, a hundred percent. Totally with you. This notion of double dose.
Yeah.
And, because we know that if we want to accelerate in reading, it's double dose. Right? We know that. We have learning equation. We can talk about that. Same thing with behavior, double dose of care. Some of the youngsters need a double dose of care. They have to, every day, we have to be out there. And Beth, one of the things that Beth and I talk about all the time is, there is no business for grudges in this building, in this world. We hold no, we don't hold grudges against eleven-twelve, right? Every day is a new day. And we have to be out, and a simple being in the hall every day, welcoming every kid and being thankful that they're here. A youngster walks in two minutes late, sometimes we say, I'm just really glad you're here. Because of what, what, beyond that, two minutes beyond that could have been an unbelievable amount of stuff. So, yeah, we'll talk about how do we provide a double dose of care for those youngsters, within the framework of what we have. Because it's just like, to me, it is a parallel to reading, to accelerate reading. Kids are willing to double dose.
With that, I will put the brakes on for tonight. And then, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I, I just need one sentence. I'm very proud of our district, our schools, and our board, and our community for bringing this topic to light. I think it's a topic that has been talked about behind the scenes for years, in smaller ways. And I'm just proud of everyone for coming to the table and being willing to have the conversation.
And I think it'll be good for us to continue this. So as board members continue to have your thoughts, track them, questions, track them. And we can come up with a plan to discuss this at our next meeting, or at a future meeting, a board retreat, something where we can get in a little more depth on this and really give it the justice that it, that it deserves, and the time that it deserves. So with that, I will go on to the next item. I will turn it over to Superintendent Steele for our preschool tuition plan.
Thank you. In short, our current preschool tuition is twenty-two seventy-five a year. We're recommending an increase of a hundred dollars a year next year, and then another one hundred dollars two years from now. Meg Bochamp has looked closely at, at neighboring preschools. We're still well under their tuition rates, but given our partnership Uh, but given our part-time program and the clientele that we serve, we feel pretty comfortable about that, uh, that tuition rate. And so, uh, we can either accept that tonight as a, uh, as a board. If you have additional questions, I would want to take those and then go back to Meg and then respond to you that way because I don't have all of her answers for you. So if you have a lot, I'll just take those questions and get back to you as a board. But that's our, that's our recommendation.
Questions? Terry?
Thank you. We're a good team now. Um, is it a hundred more a year or a month?
A year.
Okay.
And it's 2275 for the current year, correct?
Correct. So go from 2275 this year to 2375 a year next year.
About 4.3%. I cheated on that one. I have a math, no, I'm just kidding. Jason, do you have a question?
Yeah, just a, a quick question. And I don't know if you can answer this, but I think you might have a ballpark figure. How much more revenue would this add in how to, you know, preschool budget to, yeah?
Not much. We have very few, uh, non-disabled peers in the preschool program. So, um, if, if it's a couple thousand dollars, I'd be surprised.
Thank you.
How many kids do we turn away? What percentage do we accept for the peers?
Kathleen?
We have 22 students that currently tuition, uh, students in the preschool program. We have a waiting list, um, with small number on that waiting list currently. And next year we're looking at, you know, adding an additional section in the morning to meet the needs of all of our incoming students on IEPs to have another section. So we'll probably add between six and eight additional tuition students. So, um, you know, we are currently accepting those enrollments. We have a list of families that we've been working with to, you know, meet students and then build plans for. So I think in general, next year we're looking at 28 about, um, in the tuition list.
And we don't know how many we, how many don't make the, make that program or how many are on the waiting list.
Some families will stay on the waiting list and then find a different program. They don't hear from us. So it kind of fluctuates throughout the year. I would say anywhere between five and 10 at different points in the year.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? I was just going to say, would somebody like to put a motion on the table tonight to accept a $100 preschool tuition raise for the FY '23 calendar year? Terry? I have a motion? No, I have a second. Josh, any further discussion? I, I worded the motion the way that I did was because I think that, I don't know if we need to commit to an FY '25 preschool tuition raise right now. So I think we do the $100 this year and then we can revisit it, you know, next year for, or for FY '25 as needed. So that was why it was worded that way. So with that, all in favor? Five yeses and no nos. So that motion passes unanimously. Uh, next on our list, I will turn it back over to Ms. Facy for an update on our unassigned fund balance.
Okay. So you should have, uh, the May, uh, meeting projections in your packet. Um, I know we went through in detail the, the different, uh, functions last meeting. So I can do that again. Or, um, basically the bottom line has not changed drastically. I think it was, uh, 164.2 projected at the last meeting and we're at, um, a deficit of 157. So as we discussed, I think the, um, the more pertinent conversation will happen next month when we have better projections. And the board, um, will see the change in the health trust funds that came down. So that we can have that discussion on how you want to handle the deficit. But this report does highlight the, uh, special education, um, deficits in there. So you can see the amounts.
And, and refresh my memory, but there is a list of projects compiled where, um, depending what the final numbers are and then depending on how, how we want to allocate, if any of that health trust money, what projects we might be, want to focus that money on, correct?
Um, no projects actually are being proposed because we can do that. But the, the, the first requirement will be to fund the 650 and the capital reserve.
And that will come out of not only revenue, but any unassigned fund balance. So if we fund anything, we'd have to take out of that 360 for the health trust. We'd have to put that towards whatever the balance is between revenue and.
Revenue and the expenditures. Yeah. Yep. So I wouldn't anticipate you having a lot of funds available for end of year projects. I mean, depending on what you do, if you decide to, um, to use the special ed trust fund, then you potentially would have funds available. If you decide to not do that, then you potentially wouldn't.
Well, even right now, if we use, uh, we're, there's a request from the expended trust in this graphic of 200,000. That still leaves us 43,000, um, that we have left over combined with the revenue. We still don't hit 650. So.
Correct.
Even if we use that, we're still limited basically whatever is the balance of the health trust for anything that we would have.
Which is why we're not proposing, um, end of year projects.
Okay.
We would expect the board to want to return funds to the taxpayers from health trust as much as possible.
Any further questions? Okay. Thank you, Amy. And we'll, in, uh, next month, we'll have the final, final report. Approve it in July or can we approve it next month? We, I don't think we can because it's so early.
It'll still, it's going to be tough for us to get, um, end of May numbers. So I'll, I'll try. But the board meeting is when? June? Yeah. So it will certainly have, it'll be accurate as of end of April. And I'll work with Katie and, and see, see how we can do.
Okay. All right. So our last big item on the agenda tonight, I will turn it over to Victoria for some facilities conversations.
Okay. Um, so facilities is a big conversation. Um, and before I even really dig into this, it is imperative that we as a board, um, and everyone, you know, seated at this table, that we weigh in on our thoughts regarding facilities. Things that are, that we say that are not public, um, are not out there in the public to the community. And so when people are talking in the community and have different ideas and someone on the board may say to themselves, well, we've already talked about that. If it hasn't been discussed multiple times in a public forum such as this, um, it might not be something that is really being heard by the community. So I would just encourage all board members, um, you've already seen this presentation. You've had multiple documents shared with you ahead of time, but I, it's going to be a, a conversation that, that we need to dig into. So I know usually I'm the one asking for the microphone to keep on talking. Um, but I would really appreciate you guys jumping in, um, as much as possible. A lot of the format of this presentation, um, is so that when it is shared with the public, there, um, there are a lot of things listed. I think it's important for the public to know that we're looking at all of these things that are coming up and that we want the feedback, um, from all different sources. So, uh, with that being said, um, I'm just going to turn and like give a nod. Oh, or I can press the button. Uh, yeah, I can do that. Okay. There we go. It is. I'll be gentle with it. Um, okay. So for today's goals, there are three simple goals. We're going to review the community feedback, discuss the next steps, and then make sure that we have some board action. So the first place that we received community feedback was at a March 24th meeting, um, for the SAU 39 Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. It was a post-election meeting. Uh, the minutes are available there. Um, thank you to Danae for, for always coming and taking our, our minutes. It was a very important meeting to have to wrap up the budget season because it was, it, at this point is the last meeting that the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee has had. At our last SAU meeting, there was conversation about the future of a Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. It's important to make sure that this has been wrapped up before we move forward. So during that meeting, um, each person went around and gave their feedback about many different things related to the ballot. What we ended up realizing after filling out a whiteboard over at the Brick School is that things really broke down into three themes, education, cost and mistrust. Most things were able to easily be identified in one of those three categories. You can read them there on the slide. Cost, we all know it was very expensive. Mistrust, we know that, um, there was a lot going on between our administration. Also, um, the desire of residents to see more financial restraint in our budgeting. And then from the education side, um, there was a lot of information that was put out to the community. And the conversation was, did the community hear the information that was being put out? If you put out information to the same 20 people, you're not reaching the 21st person. Um, I, I often go back through and read the minutes of our meetings and Danae caught this one perfectly. Architects have met their obligations. We have no more money for redesign. Both DEW, our construction company, and Banwell, the architect, seem very willing to help us for the next year. We as a district need to say that there are no more funds. We need to decide as a committee and as a board, how we want to move forward. We discussed the options to lower the cost, um, with DEW Construction and Banwell Architects. I was involved in that meeting from a JFAC perspective. There were a few options that were discussed. The first was to use fewer durable materials. Part of the push for using durable materials in the plan that was presented is that it would cost less, uh, over time for the upkeep of the facility. And therefore it would cost more at the beginning. So my first question to them was, hey, guys, great idea. Let's just use less of those and use something different. But they, um, knew much more about construction than I did, as I have said all along in the process. And they told me that would not be this type of cost savings that I was really looking for or that our residents were looking for. Uh, the second idea was to break the project up into two separate pieces. This has been something that has been discussed over time, uh, over the last three years, multiple times. The decision to put the projects together was based on a perceived need of both of the buildings. Um, and, and one option would be to break it into two separate pieces. And the third option was to change to a new design of an elementary school by building a smaller school. This was something that was thrown around at that table and was very quickly, um, it kind of cast aside, to be honest with all of you. A redesign would cost additional architect and engineering fees. That means additional money from taxpayers. It would also result in the continued use of Clark School, which when we were talking about the reason for a new building, that was not part of the goal. Um, so for that reason, uh, changing to a new design of the elementary school isn't really feasible. When I look at these three, I realize that I am leading you to say that my priority is to break the project into two separate pieces. But I encourage the board to ask me more questions if you have more ideas about anything that you see on the board. Which part would you like me to? I encourage you to ask me questions about anything that you see on the board. Is that what, the part that you want to? Oh, I under, I understand.
Crap here is not a great way to go. You save a little bit of money, but it's not a great idea.
Sure. Can you turn your microphone on? So, sorry. Otherwise it just sounds like I'm talking to myself or anybody who's watching the video.
Sorry. Sorry, sorry. Um, just that the breaking into separate, were you saying that you're, you're feeling that you're leaning towards that, but that you don't want to, you don't want to guide us too far or you're leaning against? That's where I was trying to, to clarify what you just said.
Sure. I feel like when I look at these three options, that I am leading you all toward the second option. But my opinion of what we should be doing is not the.
The only opinion.
The only opinion that matters. I want to have the conversation with all of you.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So next up was April 13th, when we held community listening sessions. First of all, I want to say how proud I am that the Amherst School Board jumped in and held these sessions because this was something that, um, many people could say we were crazy to do. Because if the town had come out and voted against something like this, they were, um, you know, likely to come and tell us that we were crazy. That being said, it was really important to us to have the connection with the town and to develop the relationships, just like Steve is talking about today. So what we did was we held three separate sessions. We tried to hold them at different locations, different times, to work for, you know, a variety of schedules. Um, we know that no schedule is predictable. So we were able to capture 24 attendees, which was great. More than we expected, uh, less than we hoped, but that's okay. And by taking turns, each resident was asked to share their opinions at these meetings. And all board members have notes from all of the sessions. So, um, at each session, there were at least two board members present. And notes were taken and shared amongst all of us for those. Okay. So this is a long list and this is, you know, in some ways more for the community than it is for the board members, although they have already seen this list. This is a list of all the topics that were covered in those notes. It is not a complete list of topics. In many ways, um, I'm trying to think, like traffic is on there as just one simple word. We had multiple conversations about traffic, right? So some of these are, are really distilled down just to a theme. And we'll make sure that we have this, um, slide deck available for the public to go through at any point too. So next up, we had a community survey. Um, there are printed copies at Town Hall and at the Town Library. Our initial intent was to have this survey wrap up, um, right around May 1st. And we've discovered that we need more time. There are only 250 community respondents. And for, for our, you know, I don't know, security, I guess, in doing a survey, 250 people isn't really enough. Um, we need to figure that out. And so we're giving ourselves through the NMA, um, to reach out to multiple people, multiple avenues. Um, it has been shared through our SAU parent guardian contacts. It's been shared with the Amherst Citizen, the Patch, various social media accounts. Um, and we've also tried to reach out to Amherst organizations for people to share, um, you know, with others who are involved. I should say one more thing here. On the end of that, the bottom of that, there's a call for action. If the board, for us to discuss at the end, um, if the board would like to mail a postcard to residents, we can discuss that concept, that cost and everything else with our business administrator and our superintendent team that's all here tonight. So with this community survey, board members have real-time access to the results. Um, the questions include background information about the voters, priorities of the educational and facility improvements related to Warren Article 12, pros and cons of Warren Article 12, and there are several open-ended, um, responses available at the end. We have received 185 open-ended responses, which is fantastic. When you're doing a survey, looking at the data and the graphs is a lot of fun. But you really get more information from those open-ended responses. So this is just some background information. Again, it's, it's primarily for the community, um, to see the information. Part of the issue that I see with our survey is that 55% of the respondents received it through school communication. Um, and we know that 70% of residents in Amherst aren't connected to the school. So, um, there's, there's a disproportionate amount there. So this one asks to rank the facility improvements in order of their importance to you. The blue is what is most, is, is what is ranked most important to people. Um, so you'll see that this graph is obvious, right? You can see where those blues are. Okay, we're good. We understand where, where people are falling. For me, this is significantly different from some of the other results that come later on in the survey. So these are the educational improvements. You see that things are a little bit closer together, but still relatively obvious who's, you know, who's rating the lowest priority for certain things versus the highest. Oops, wrong button. Woo. Okay. Here we go. Um, this one is, is an interesting one. So we asked, which factors do you see as pros for Warren Article 12? And what we found is that people who ranked, um, the top two most important factors, I added those numbers up together to get our total number of votes for those top two categories. When you look at those top two categories, the, those that are in green received 152 to 168 points. The next most amount of points was 139, which is where you see the yellow. But then it's important to note that those four yellows are all within seven points of each, six points. of each, six points, however many points of each other. They're all really close together. So this is what the pros are. Here on the cons, we have a very different spread of numbers. So the one that stands out at 103, which is almost 10 above the next, is the price was too high combined with other ballot measures. Those others are in a spread of 14 points for other reasons. I'm just going to go back to this one first and just read these out loud. So for those top two, we're believed the condition of our schools and the urgency to do something. Number two, support public schools as an integral part of the Amherst community. And then the four that were behind those are, which factors do you see as pros are the most educationally sound option, wanted to take advantage of possible eligibility for state building aid and a favorable bond rate, waiting would mean students would remain importables for many more years, and trusted the staff about the positive impact of this project on student learning. So here, these are the factors that you see as cons. Like I said, the first or the highest ranked was the price was too high combined with other ballot measures. The other answers are too many bond issues in one year, not convinced it was the most educationally sound solution, not convinced it was the best long-term solution, mistrust of SAU administration, and felt like no effort was being made to cut budgets. So this question on the community survey is looking to see where the financial support falls from the community. And what we, that long line that you see with 75% is, and it's cut off on the screen, it's something along the lines of the schools are our priority and I would support a project with rationalized costs. After that, you see that we are at about 9% who will not support a facility project at any cost. And then above, those are different options that kind of, in some ways, are searching to educate the community about the costs and what different costs would mean. So we have, I think there's 51 on there, 70 and 83 million are the other, the other numbers that we included. Fifty, just to give a highlight, if anybody isn't sure what those numbers mean, 51 million is about the breakdown of the elementary school this year. 70 million would look more like the elementary school and then some key projects at the middle school. 83 million is the total of Warren Article 12. And then solar, we also included solar on here, as we felt it was important to make sure we included it. So one thing that has arisen is a question amongst the community of, is this the right path forward? I can say, as somebody who has been working with facilities since at least 2018, which is several years, many, many options and paths have been researched. That does not mean that a different person looks at the same path and sees the same solution. And I think that's important for all of us to acknowledge. But there's also a lot of information that we can share with people who are asking these questions now in current daytime that maybe have not had the same information over the last three years. So the, a goal that I think the board should be looking for is to confirm the path presented on Warren Article 12 and make sure that it matches our current conditions. So we've talked for, you know, several years about the capital needs assessment, for example. That was done back in 2017, 2017. It probably needs to be updated, because we know that we have a director of facilities who has been fixing things around the buildings, and we know that there are still things that need to be fixed. For us to be able to look back at that now is an important time. There's also always a conversation about special education. We've had the special education conversation. We have had presentations as a board. However, those presentations are now six to 12 months old. And while many things in schools take time, sometimes other people think that we should make sure that we're shored up with our programming and with our space needs. Finally, the business administrator position. We have a state aid application, and we, as board, need to weigh our business administrators' time. It's a lengthy application, and if we have no intention of moving forward with any of this, it would be, it would behoove us to make that decision sooner than later without moving that process forward too far. It also would behoove us to move forward if we have any intention of bringing this So we have a couple dates coming up. We have a, we don't, but Sohegan Cooperative School Board has a meeting on May 10th. There has been conversation at the Sohegan Board level about the use of the annex. I know that the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee had looked into using the annex several years ago. The Sohe, the current Sohegan Board would like to look into that themselves. So that should be coming up on their May agenda. And we have an SAU meeting on May 16th. As I mentioned at the beginning, the last SAU meeting was the last time that the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee has done anything, and they are waiting for a charter. I'm going to go through, I'm just going to read these things out loud. I made sure that I was thoughtful in what I wrote on them. So the SAU meeting on May 16th, the direction of JFAC as a subcommittee of the SAU will be determined. JFAC has been an advisory in the past who brings recommendations to the boards after researching and then planning staged projects. For JFAC to be effective as it is currently designed, Amherst School Board, Sohegan School Board, and Mount Vernon School Board, to an indirect extent, must work together to research options and stage the needs for the resident tax impact. And if the SAU Board is not interested in working in this capacity or one agreed upon, ASB must decide how to move forward in connection with the community volunteers. Currently, we have about 25 people who have taken the survey and who have given us their email address as someone who wants to participate, not just be kept informed, but who wants to participate. Those people are sort of floating out there right now until we give them a home. So JFAC can be that home. If a joint committee is not the path forward, then Amherst needs to come up with some type of facility committee for those volunteers. And here's a list of some board actions, suggestions, not that we need to do all these, but we need to provide, or we could provide, direction for state aid application. We can vote and discuss to approve or not approve mailing a survey to residents. We could schedule a June meeting to discuss outstanding questions and receive any administration, information from administration, like updated space needs or updated capital needs assessment or any of those things. And finally, participation at the SAU Board JFAC discussion is going to be important. Sometimes at our SAU meetings, the five of us tend to not, not voice all of our thoughts and concerns, but it will be important moving forward. And I'm happy to go back and answer any questions or just open conversation. Tom can facilitate it, or I can, however you want to do this is totally fine with me.
So I think that the important thing here is that there's a lot of stuff that we're going to be waiting on. So I don't think any decisions about the projects need to be made tonight. I do think that we need to address those four points on that board. The last one is an obvious one. We're all going to be at the JFAC meeting, I mean, the SAU Board meeting on the 16th anyway. So that's not an issue right there. My first question is for Amy. In terms of hours into a state aid application, how much carryover would we have from, I guess we didn't do last year's application, correct? Because it was going to be filled out for July 1st of this year. So how many hours are we talking about to do this? And if we do state aid, that can cover any level of project, even if it's bonding, as a hypothetical, a new roof on all the buildings, that can still be something we can apply for state aid for, correct? Something as small as that, as long as it's bonded, we can apply for state aid.
Yes. So as of right now, the information that I have in order to complete a state aid application is the project that was presented.
Correct.
So in terms of hours, actually Roger and I have set up meetings all throughout the month of May to go through and complete the application. I spent some time last week looking at it. It's clear that Roger and I need to complete this together. So our plan is to move forward with the project that was presented unless we are instructed otherwise.
And I think that's really the only option we have, because it's due by July 1st, correct? And so I don't know that we're going to have any decisions on what that scope of the project is going to be, firm, hard, concrete decisions before that point. So I think that unfortunately, we have to do that. I guess my question is, is there carryover that we can utilize for next year's application? If we, if something, if it gets voted down, if it, if it doesn't go forward as is, is this something that can carry over year to year where some of that work that you're doing now can be used in future years?
It's a two-year cycle.
Oh, so this is applying, so there's nothing we would do next July, anyway?
Right. We're submitting it this year. So just to, you know, make it simple, if the board were to say, okay, we only want to do the elementary school, then that would be really useful information for us to have, because we would complete the application based on that. If the board were to say we're not able to make that decision, then Roger and I would complete the application as was presented on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thanks, Tom. If you complete the application as it was, as it was presented, is it like a budget that we could spend less, that we could ask for less in state aid should something pass in March that is split or is? So in other words, it's sort of allowing us to apply for as much as this amount of aid, but we could apply for less if the project changes between now and next March?
Yeah, the specific dollar amount is not something that we're beholden to. I mean, the plans are preliminary. What is important, though, is that we will be awarded points based on certain criteria. So if we change the project such that the point allocation would change or not be applicable, then that will affect our ranking.
Gotcha. And I'm guessing it's not a quick and easy, straightforward point system that we can all understand in five minutes?
No, I can send you all the link, and you can take a look at the application on the DOE website so you can see. But it is quite extensive. It's a pretty lengthy application that requires us to distill a lot of information into some certain categories for ranking, and then there's a lot of backup documentation that we need to provide.
Just one final follow-up.
Yep.
Is it true, so I know, obviously with budgets, if you budget, you can't go over. So for example, if we decided to bring a similar project forward, but now it costs 90 million, are we stuck only at 83, or does the dollar amount is flexible there?
I believe the dollar amount is flexible. Adam might know a little more about that, but...
The purpose of this deadline is to inform the legislature as they prepare for not the budget they're working on now, but the one they're going to be working on for this whole next year, completing next June 30th. So it's really a fair warning to the state about what facilities projects might be out there. And people who don't submit have virtually no chance of getting funding. Those who do submit still don't have a big chance of getting funding, but have a better chance than those who don't.
Yeah, just to give you some context, this past cycle, I think there were 14 applications, and one project was funded. So it's really not, not to be Debbie Downer, but it's, it's not necessarily likely that we will receive this. However, it's important that we apply to put our, our name in the ring, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board's thoughts are, but I think we have to. I don't think it's, I know, Amy, this is not to demean the hours that you have to put into this.
It's okay.
But I think that it's a misuse of taxpayer resources not to apply when, you know, there's a chance, even if it's a million bucks or it's 300,000, if it's something that we're going to get out of this, the fact that we don't do that, I think, is dereliction of duty on our part, so.
Agreed. I guess my only request would be if the board does decide that you're just going to put one project forth over the other, that would be important, because that could potentially change our ranking. If we're putting in information, then we actually don't do that work.
Now, you're just going to start gathering information this month. So at that June meeting, if we have a better idea as to what we're looking to do, we can give you that decision at that point, and it won't, it will...
Sooner the better, but sure.
Okay. I just don't know what we're going to have before. That is the issue.
And we're, Roger and I are going to go forward, assuming both, and if I'm cutting out something, then so be it. Just also something for the board to consider, if that were something that you were considering, there are funds in, in the CNA that are planned for both, for all three buildings, really. So those funds could potentially be available for one building, perhaps.
Okay.
So.
Victoria?
So I think we're kind of at that position where we haven't had the conversation yet that Amy's asking us if we've had. But maybe it's the time to have that conversation, or at least start that conversation regarding what our thoughts are on the next year's ballot. Is the, you know, I don't know if people just want to kind of share thoughts.
Can, before we do that, Victoria, can we just touch on those last, that last thing? Voting on a survey to residents, do we know what the cost of that is, Amy?
It was what, 1,500?
1,500, yeah.
Okay. Anybody have thoughts on that?
I have all kinds of thoughts. I know, I think, in my opinion, especially where, I feel like the survey we have, and I feel badly saying this, because I know Victoria's put in like inordinate number of hours on this stuff, it's not representative of the larger community if we only have that level of response. So I think, I, while I don't like spending $1,500, I think it's worth it to us in the long run if we could actually get a real sense of how the broader community feels. Because I look at that 75% number, and I'm like, oh, we just have to tell a better story and we get it. But then I'm like, oh, that's only the people who are in the school, so that would make sense. You know, that, that number unfortunately might go down significantly.
Yep.
So I guess, I know there's no motion on the table, but I guess I would advocate that we do send something out to the, to the, to the broader.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion. I'll make a motion that we spend the $1,500 to send out mailers to all residents of Amherst.
Do we have a second?
I'll make a second and then we discuss.
That's what my next point was. So you sound like you have anything?
Well, so I want to be clear on what we're sending out. My sense would be a mailer directing people how to fill out the survey and not the physical survey itself, correct?
Correct. Because of the length of any survey, so prior, prior years when, when there have been facility projects on the ballot or on the horizon here in Amherst, they've sent out the physical survey and asked people to mail them back. Multiple pages, costs more money. We're trying to not do that. Also, you know, in an effort to be a little more environmentally conscious, sending out just a postcard is less paper. Also directing people to an online survey or directing them to the Town Hall or the library would allow us to, you know, have more of the data in a computer setting.
Okay. And I guess, so then the question is, I know it's not a lot, but we are also where we are budget-wise. So where would we get that money and where would it come out of?
It would be, I mean, you know, it'll just increase your deficit, so.
Yeah, okay.
The alternative is to wait till July 1st, right?
Yeah, yep.
And spend out of next year's budget.
Yep.
But then, I mean, I, right, which would also, you know, we're in default, so. And I worry if we wait, the problem is, is then we're waiting to get information that we can then take action on. So, you know, we're already sort of, I don't want to say, we're not trying to drag our heels, but because we have limited information, we can't, it's hard to act upon that information because of your points, Jason, as I see the same thing, is, is the cohorts that we have gotten information from are limited, and our efforts to put stuff in the library or Town Hall haven't yielded a lot of other results. So, you know, I'm interested to hear others' thoughts, but I think it is worth getting it out there so that we can work with the proper amount of information to make decisions.
I have a money question. And this, this might be an absolute no, and I know that it's not a decision we could make, but I know the last point is more collaboration with the SAU Board. Is there any money in SAU that we could use to send, never mind.
That's a, that's a hard no, sorry.
Other thoughts on the motion to send out a mailer for approximately 1,500? Terry?
Yeah, I'm going to tell you why I'm really torn on this one, is that every penny counts. We know we're out of money, and I don't expect that what we're going to hear is much different. If I thought that it was going to give us an epiphany of some sort that we don't already have, I would say absolutely, let's do it. I would rather wait until we have something... I would rather wait until we have something more concrete to share. And as we are trying to communicate more, I would rather take that money and spend it when I have something I want to tell you rather than I've given you a million opportunities to talk to me. I, we could have more things where we're available to talk to people, but I don't know that what we would learn at this point is different than, it was a crap ton of money at a really bad time, and there is problematic that even though we may or may not have understood why you put it together, putting it together made it seem even worse and like I didn't have choice and they didn't have, like, I think that it's, we would hear the same basic themes. So even though our our group of people that are engaged, we had a lot of different ages showed up, we had, we had retired individuals without kids in the system, we had with grandchildren in the system, we had long-term residents, new residents, we actually had a fairly good representation of our population, quite honestly, from who showed up to these listening times. And so I would rather repeat something like that and see if anything comes from it because I don't think what we would get would be significantly different. And so what do we hope to hear? I don't know what else we could possibly hear that we haven't already pretty much heard. So I would rather take that money and apply it towards communicating more when we have something worthy of communicating.
So Terry, that's a good point. And I would say if we if we take the qualitative data that we got from the listening sessions and the quantitative data we got from these surveys, I think we can, I feel comfortable making decisions moving forward based on that information. I I would be interested to hear from Victoria about what the general feel of JFAC is and and her opinion, having been more deeply involved in this. But ultimately, I'm with you, I'm torn, but I think we probably are not going to get some magical information from another survey. So I guess I I hear your point.
Why don't we call a vote on that then with Jason's motion? All in favor of spending the money to send a postcard mailer to get clicks on the survey? All in favor? Okay. And all opposed? One, two, three, four, five. That fails five to nothing. So now, Victoria, we can go to your question. Again, let's...
Can I comment on that real quick?
Sure.
Okay. I think that the information, because the five of us have seen all of the notes and all of the survey responses and all of the responses from the JFAC meeting, I think it's important for the community to know that because we've read all of those things already, we're already seeing repetitive answers. The one piece that we won't have is the dollar amount support, but that's one piece of information. So I I do think it's important that the community hears that all of us have read all of that information and are seeing repeats in there already.
And I think the dollar amount support is going to vary depending on us listening to all the other responses and then coming up with a project that meets, as you saw, there was a large number that would support a sensible rationalized project. So that's going to be a different perspective to everybody, just like the 10% who said they wouldn't support anything. There's nothing we could do to to get their support. So with that, I will, I I think I'm going to open it up for one comment to Victoria's question earlier as to what we think our individual ideals should be going forward or what we think our scope of that project should be going forward. Does anybody want to go first as to what they feel we should be focused on for a facilities project, whether it's nothing, the same thing, something in between? Jason?
Sure, I'll I'll go first and and give the best middle-of-the-road answer I can. I don't have a great answer for this. I I I think the facilities are clearly a need and I think some major project is necessary. And the reason I say I don't have a clear answer for exactly what the scope should be is that I think there are so many different questions we've even talked about tonight and how they're interwoven. And so what I'm really referring to is, you know, is Steve, because I don't know his title at the moment, has noted like, is like, what's our overarching philosophy? And that might impact what some of the physical space looks like. So in in part, I'll admit, right? So I have a little bit of a bias here, so I'll just be open with my bias. I'm really a big proponent of project-based outdoor-type education. So if we're move, if if, let's just say hypothetically, that were a type of philosophy that we were developing, that might change a little bit of what the physical building looks like. So I think there's a lot of interwoven pieces, and I think that that might help us get more community support if we, you know, partner with the teachers. Maybe we have listening sessions with the with the teachers and board members present and say, well, this is how it impacts this group and this is what we believe. I think if we could articulate a full belief, it would help us to articulate better what it is that we want to build and why we need to build it, if that, if that makes sense. I I don't know. I know that was kind of a lot or, but that's kind of where my mind is. I mean, if if we have to split it, and I and I don't like saying this because I'm a middle school educator and obviously my love and heart is with the middle school, which is, makes me odd, I get. I I think just due to the way the grades are broken and what we would hope to be doing in terms of an elementary, I think we'd have to, if we're going to split, I think we have to prioritize the elementary school if I understand the logic of it. So I would be, if we're going to split it, I'm in support of at a minimum putting on an elementary school, but we need to have a bigger discussion about, and I know we have no money to get an alternate plan. I totally understa- I to- I know what I'm saying doesn't necessarily match up with the dollars, but I think it would help us to get it across the finish, across the finish line.
Terry, would you like to go next?
Sure. I I think that one of the simplest parts of it, and it really was a takeaway that all of us heard very loudly, was that people wanted the choice of being able to say, even if it made sense to do both, putting it together as an all-or-nothing, single-price tag didn't feel like a choice and it felt disconcerting. And they wanted to be able to say, yes, 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 no, no, yes, or no, no. But they wanted at least that level of choice. And I feel like that is a pretty simple thing for us to agree to, to go, okay, great. We may put in our language of this contingent that if one passes and not the other, we can't do both, you know, whatever we choose to do down the line. But I feel like that is something that we could probably commit to fairly easily. But now what's going to be in those, I think, revisiting sooner than later? Where are we at with our 20-year plan? Where would the total, I know that we've had a repeated request for total cost of ownership and what is maintenance, like, okay, great, what have you done with what you've already done? And saying, all right, there are challenges, but what have we done well and and communicating that better? And saying, what have we started already to do better that we haven't, can't do everything and we don't have the money to do everything yet? But what have we already, have we turned a corner in a positive way? And what takes us that next step? I think that's really a big part of our, has to be a big part of our communication with our community now, right? Is part of that mistrust that was very clear was, we keep giving you money and where is it going? Like, I, you're only showing me all this bad stuff and are you taking care of anything? And I can understand that question, right? That would feel if you didn't know closer and if you weren't in these facilities every day, and if you're only seeing the negative because we're trying to make sure they understand the need and the need is very evident and very there, we need to do a better job of saying, I feel like they know the need is there, but also celebrating what's going well and what are, have we already started to do better? So that we can build up some trust capital to say, well, here's what still needs to be done. So I think that maybe revisiting, like you say, revisiting, why, why does it make more sense to keep things in district and have the space for that where it costs much more and we get less reliable results by sending kids out of district, you know, for everything? But it actually makes sense to keep them in, but it does take space. And so revisiting some of those as we educate and we have those conversations, I think, is important. And I think that that will help inform our next steps. So I think that the simple answer is, I agree that of some of those things that have, that came up in your presentation, the splitting out at the very least would seem like it makes sense, even if we still believe that we have needs at both. And I also agree that elementary does have to be, if we could only do something, elementary is is the most immediate need. And hopefully, it would, it would give us some flexibility on what we could do at the middle school, which also has needs.
Josh? So as of March, I think we all agreed we had a really great project and it was the right project and a lot of time was spent on it. I still believe that. But the community has spoken. And so how do we now think about how best to move forward? And I do think the idea, the simplest idea of breaking it apart into two separate projects, the details of which we can talk more about in the future, but I I lean towards that option because I believe that part of the work that you were talking about, Jason, you know, some of that has been done and we can communicate it out better. Some of it will happen after a bond gets approved and we get more into the nitty-gritty of like, here's what we're doing, teachers, come in and tell us like what the walls should look like and how these certain things that we're just, we're still at the 5,000-foot view right now, right? So I I don't think we should scrap everything and start over. I don't think small changes are going to make an impactful difference and could lead to, you know, more cost down the line. So I think, you know, an effort, a long and hard effort was made to do this right. I think it was the right project. I think we continue to have good projects. I think refining our message and refining how we present it and how we offer it to the public is important. And so that leads me to, like you said, Victoria, breaking it apart into two, two separate projects and how we do that on the ballot, whether we do that both next year or some, you know, some planned phasing, we can talk about, but that would be where I lean as well.
Something that I think was really interesting when I looked back at the data from the survey so far is that one of the top-ranked reasons for people to support the project was that they believed in what the teachers were telling them about the schools. Our principals put together videos of each of their schools, showing the conditions and showing the impact that it would make for their teachers and their students. I think that as a board, as a town, rallying around everything that our schools do well and that our teachers do well and that our parents do well in our community is something that's been lost recently. And I think that listening to any feedback that we are given, whether or not it's 250 people or 10,000 people, listening to feedback and making sure that in some way we're showing where we're listening is important. It's it's important to rebuild the trust, but it's just also important because that's the type of community that I believe all five of us moved here for and and want to live in. When it comes to the specific building, I feel comfortable saying that the elementary school is the building that needs to be built first if you were going to break them apart. Something that's important for, you all probably know this, but the community, if anybody is listening, to know is that by by building a pre-K through 5 school, you remove fifth grade from the middle school. By taking them out, you have a little bit more wiggle room to just work within the building. You also have the capital needs assessment that has already been planned and is continuing, you know, to to see progress. Obviously, a roof still needs to be fixed at the middle school. That's not something that if we do one, we're going to completely ignore the other. But I think that I I like the direction that we're going and that we're talking. I also think that a lot of things that Jason said about making sure that we're all going in the same idea of, like, in some ways, strategic planning or whatever, whatever we want to call it, I think it's important that to make sure that we're all rallying around our schools and and making them tell, having them tell us what they are and us saying, oh, yeah, that's what you are and that's great and we love that. So, you know, I'm I'm open to all of these things. I do think that it's very important when we talk about a joint facilities committee, you know, here at the table, we're talking, we're talking and we're expressing our desire for the elementary school to be first. If we have other community members who are telling us that they want us to wait two years and do research to figure out how the annex could be used or expanded, that's going to be a question that we're going to have to come back to. And I just want to make sure that I am putting that out there to the five of you or the four of you so that, you know, it's it's on your mind. Sometimes I've been privileged to be a little bit too deep in the weeds with the facilities, but that means that sometimes I need to make sure that I'm sharing out information that I am hearing. So that's, that's all of my thoughts.
Okay. I'll take the final word on this tonight. I think that the elementary school is the project that we need to focus on, which I think makes it five for five, Amy. So I think you can use that in your intuition for, you know, infer that, excuse me, with how you fill out the application. I think that focusing on that, I think that we can then focus on using the capital reserve fund for AMS projects that come down the line and maybe put less of a focus on stuff at Clark Wilkins unless it's it's broken and needs to be fixed as opposed to something nearing end of life. We, I think we need to wait for it to be end of life or maybe just prior to that so we don't have a school we have to shut down. I do think we need to work with Sal Hegan. I think that we have to investigate annex options if they're willing to investigate that. I think it's neglect for us not to look at that option. And then I still think that we need updated project lists. I don't know if we need a full capital needs assessment, but maybe an updated project list from Roger, kind of that happy medium before we get to the full CNA because that's going to cost money to do that. And then lastly, I think we need to look at these, the special needs program, an audit of that program to find out what our actual capacity is. We we do a lot right now and and while it's great to have it in-house, there is a breaking point where the, yes, it may cost us more to send kids out of district, but it's not going to cost us 50 million to build a new building because we need five more special education classrooms. So, and we're going to have 30 kids in a general education classroom. So we need to find where that breaking point is and make sure that we don't cross that until we get a new building situated. So those are my thoughts. But again, elementary school and then auditing special needs to find out what that capacity truly is so that we can start looking at out-of-district plans if needed, because at some point we're we're going to hit a breaking point where our buildings just can't contain the amount of kids that we have in that program, either staffing-wise or space-wise, so.
Just one thing about the special ed. The programming for the project that we put on the ballot in March did include extensive work from our SAU administrators and our school-level administrators to make sure that we had the right amount of special education space, not only for where they are today, but for their plan moving forward.
Correct. Because we, because we don't have that space now. We can't plan five years out with the current buildings that we have, which is part of the reason we need that. So we have to determine, you know, cost-wise for staffing and space, you know, where do we put, you know, it's not just IEPs, it's it's physical space that we need too, and that's the issue that we're having at this point. So with that, I think we'll be able to, Amy has a direction for the application. We'll be able to do some work with JFAC in the SAU meeting later on this month. And then I think we can come back in June at this meeting or if we need a special meeting to talk just facilities, we can make a better judgment at that point what our next steps will be. So with that, I will, is it Adam or Steve who's going to talk about resignations and nominations tonight?
I got it.
Okay.
So I have six nominations this eve- this evening that I I'm going to place into nomination. And then a couple resignations we'll talk about in non-public before we accept those. Collectively, these six teachers will save us $177,000 just in salary because of the turnover from retirements and resignations, et cetera. So I'm very pleased to place all six of these people into nomination. First, Catherine Fantasia, grade-one teacher at Clark Wilkins. She'll be at Bachelor's Step 15 at a salary of $67,790. Morgan Ireland, kindergarten teacher at Clark Wilkins, Master's Step 6, $56,417. Phoebe Alex, grade-three teacher at Clark Wilkins, Bachelor's Step 1, $41,717. Faith Pudlow, grade-eight teacher at AMS, Bachelor's Plus 15, Step 4, $48,867. Mackenzie Robinson, grade-one at Clark Wilkins, Bachelor's Step 1, $41,071. And finally, Carissa Carrier, kindergarten at Clark Wilkins, Master's Step 8, $60,390. As you know, as a board, once I place them into nomination, there needs to be a motion by the board to elect them and then to pass that motion. If you have any questions about them, I would ask that we go into non-public to answer those questions about any specific candidates, though. Thank you.
Are there questions on the candidates that we need to carry over into non-public or does somebody want to make a motion to accept the, or to elect those nominations?
Any questions? You want to be in that?
If it's a question about the candidate, yes. If it's a question about the position, the salary, those types of things, we can do those in public.
I have questions, but nothing that would keep them from approving. So I would nominate, I would like to.
You'll make the motion?
To make the motion. To to accept the nomination as presented by Superintendent Steele.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Victoria seconds. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion on the floor to accept the nominations presented by Superintendent Steele? Steele? One, two, three, four, five, and a proxy vote. So it passes five to nothing unanimous on that decision. And I said the resignations that we will discuss in non-public. So thank you to those teachers and congratulations to those teachers who will start next year. With that, I will open it up for our final public comment session of the night before we go into non-public. So three minutes per speaker. If anybody would like to come up to the microphone, you can do that now or forever hold your peace. Feel free, come on up, Lisa. When you're ready.
There we go. Okay. I didn't want to break it. Okay. So Lisa Eastland Amherst. Quickly for the Jfac thing, Terry, I think you are right. I was talking with Roger after one of the listening sessions and he was very frustrated. He was like, it's, the perception is from some of the people in the public that we're doing nothing in our buildings until we get all this money. And I know, so I said, well, what if we start like every couple of weeks or whatever? We start like a blog thing where like there's a picture of something really ratchet and then they fixed it and how much it cost and we put it out to the public. And so I mentioned that to Steve and so he said that Roger does present a really good maintenance report. Maybe we just need to have that available to the public. But I'm also thinking maybe a lot of people aren't going to go through a whole maintenance report. But that is something, and I think that will build trust back that we are actually doing something to fix the buildings. Back to like building relationships and being in the classroom and things like that, I'm hearing the drumbeat of let's build relationships, but at the same time, we just removed how many full-time paras at kindergarten who are integral to building the foundations of relationships in those classrooms. And now we have a handful of part-time who I'm sure are lovely people. But if you're looking at as a board that your goal is going to be make as many relationships as you can between the staff and the students, having grade-level paras who are in the classroom, who are there every day, not rotating out in one classroom for, you know, a couple hours here and a couple hours there, is going to be one way to build those relationships stronger. I wonder if having, if heavy-loading IEP five or four kids into a classroom is needing kids where they are at. The percentage of kids who need more differentiated training when they're grouped like that, I'm wondering if that is providing the opportunity for positive peer modeling. If you're, and what that is doing is that, you know, are we measuring? Is that model producing a positive or negative experience for those students and for those staff members so that you have the time and you have the ability to create relationships and do all of that? But when 50% of your class or more needs that individual differentiated help, it's really hard to build one-on-one relationships in that way. And lastly, this may come across as being uglier than it mean to be, but I'm wondering if we're keeping in mind that some kids are better served by schools that don't operate the way ours do. We have many wonderful alternative schools in our areas. And if we look at the bottom line of how many in dollars, how many man-hours we may be spending on a certain handful of students, one, would we be financially better off if we availed ourselves of these alternative schools? But most importantly, would we be supporting those students better? That's ultimately the goal. That if a student is not thriving under our model and there is a school that has a model, well, that student will thrive. We should be looking at not worrying, like, how much is it costing us to try and make this kid fit into this model that is not the best for them? So it's something to consider as you, in five months, y'all head into budget season again. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Hey, guys. I'm Chris Amherst. So I mean, Steve, I liked the presentation all crescendo. That's my style. I love it. But some of the things I heard just seemed very generic and I'm glad to hear, as Terry mentioned, that there's no immediate timeline. But what is the timeline? And when do we know you succeed? What will we look like when you're successful? Okay? That's important to an C A. Because otherwise, that talk you gave could be given in any school district at any time. It was, you know, it's optimistic, but it, there's no measurable success criteria, that I heard. Maybe I'm, oh, some of my, my feedback, I hope to hear more of that from you later. I heard a lot about connecting, caring for children, making connections with people, not isolating them. This ridiculous masking policy that you still have on the board's reopening thing is absolutely the biggest problem in this. We don't, we can't connect people, we can't make connections as well, we can't see faces. People are treated as disease vectors instead of friends, colleagues, teachers, students. We've got to reverse that. I don't know what's taking so long. Y'all know that was a mistake, just fix it. We talked about how COVID caused this or pandemic caused this. That's not true. COVID and pandemic not caused these mental health issues. It was your reopening plan. It was your policies. It's fixable. You can fix this. Just have to stand up and you want to build trust in the community? You get very little feedback at Jfac meetings. Look at the feedback you get at the testing children for COVID for athletics. Look at the feedback you get when you have hearings on should we mask children for a year against their will, mask teachers against their will? That's where you get the feedback from. Where are these feedback meetings? If you want to rebuild trust, admit you made a mistake, do the right thing now, tell us where you are next year, you'll get more enrollment, you'll draw more people in saying this is a pro-education, you know, community school district. I think that's, again, the most important thing, holding back kids from their potential and teachers from doing their profession well. Last thing I want to talk about is the nutrition. You know, you're seeing a surplus here and a couple of months ago now, I forget what month it was, we saw a motion to provide people that work in the kitchen, kitchen staff with, I think it was shoes, to help them non-slip shoes for the kitchen and it was voted down. I think if this is a group that's bringing in surplus year over year and asking you for shoes, I think you should consider some of this money going to make their quality of life, their jobs a little bit happier, a little bit safer. And I guess that's all my comments for this. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Greg. Any further public comment?
Amy Hansen, Amherst resident, parent of two middle schoolers, a teacher in the district. I heard everything you said, Steve. I think about it and know that those are all good practices, but I also know that when I need to do something like that, you know, if I'm staring at a jammed-packed closet that's spilling out, I know it's going to get messier before it gets better. I hear the, I hear the, the pitch for support. I'm hoping that that happens because these are things that need to happen. These are things that we do need to think about, the mental health and the teachers in the classroom. You know, Victoria, I heard what you said about the sick days and personal days and all of that. And, you know, I was like, oh, that's just a really interesting thing to kind of dive into because, you know, I heard it's a marathon and I also heard that there are a lot of people that are triaging a lot of different things right now. And whether it be behaviors changing, you know, I've been teaching for 23 years. Every year's different. Every couple of years, things are totally different. You know, it's not the same classroom when I started teaching in 99 and 2000. It's very different. So we need time. Teachers need time. We need the support from the community. We need the support from administration. We need the support from the school board. We need time. We need resources. We need that support. So I hope that this is the start. I hope this gets put into motion and I hope that we can make these changes for our teachers, for our students, for our community.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else?
No.
Okay. All right. With that, I will close our final public comment session of the night. We do have a, a non-public tonight, so I will take a motion to go into non-public. I have a motion, do I have a second? It is seconded by Terry. Victoria motions, Danae and Terry second. Roll call vote to go into non-public? Gothy or yes? Thank you. It's, it is personnel, so it's RSA 91, hold on, A32 subsection.
A and C.
A and C. Thank you. And so with that, we are in non-public.